All right, good morning. Welcome to the meeting of the Oklaus County Board of County Commissioners, Tuesday, December 3rd, 8:30 a.m. at the Crestview Courthouse. We'll begin this morning with an invocation by Senior Pastor Tad Anderson from the Hub City Church in Crestview, and then led by the Pledge of Allegiance, the presentation of the colors by the Fort Warren Beach Police Department Honor Guard. If you will, please stand with me.
Good morning, let's pray.
Good morning, let's pray. Almighty God and our heavenly Father, we come before you today with gratitude and meekness, seeking your guidance and blessing as this meeting begins. We lift up our elected officials, asking that you grant them wisdom, clarity, and a spirit of humility as they deliberate and make decisions for the welfare of this community. May their work reflect your justice, mercy, and truth, promoting the common good and ensuring peace and fairness for all. We also pray for all who are in positions of authority as your word commands through their governance. We may lead peaceful and quiet lives, godly and dignified in every way. We know this pleases you, Lord, as it contributes to the desire you have for all people to be saved and to come to a knowledge of the truth. And ultimately, we ask that through the work done here and through our lives as citizens of your kingdom, your gospel might advance, transforming more hearts and lives. May more people come to know Christ as Savior and Lord, and may this community of Crestview and Okaloosa County flourish as its people live according to your design and for your glory. It's in the name of Christ Jesus we pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor Anderson. Thank you to the Fort Walton Beach Police Department and the City of Niceville Police Department.
Morning, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. It's that that time of the year is we often do several times during the year. We recognize Okaloosa County's most valuable asset, and that's our thousand-plus employees strong here in Okaloosa County. We do so at certain milestones in their career. We have a number of service awards this morning, and we have one retirement. So I'm going to call these individuals forward and ask that you stand with me, and then we're going to get a group picture afterwards. I want to start with a five-year service award. First, I'd like to recognize Steve Saxer with the airports. He's the airports finance and project development specialist, and again, this is his five-year service award. Next, I'd like to recognize Heather Overstreet. Heather is an EMS lieutenant with the EMS Division, and this is her 15-year service. And next person I'd like to recognize is Roland Sims. Roland is the administrative manager in the county administrator's office. This guy is my right hand and makes sure that I am in the right place at the right time and does a great job for us, 15-year service award. Next, I'd like to recognize Brian Graham. Brian is a correction captain in the corrections department, and this is a 20-year service award for Brian. And lastly, I'd like to recognize Mike Stinson. Mike has been with us for 19 years. He comes after a 20-year career in the Air Force. He was a deputy airports director, 19 years of service with Okaloosa County. He's done an amazing job for us with Tracy and his team building up the airport, and we want to recognize him for his 19 years as he goes off into retirement. So thank you, Mike.
We don't stand up here, we're going to get a picture with the board. You have to stand with your administrators update.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. I just have a couple of updates for you this morning. Just wanted to remind everyone that we're going to have a few commissioners down in the Tampa area over the next few days for the annual back conference, the fall conference. So we'll be, well, have like, again, I think it's three of our commissioners going to be down in the Tampa area for that and back later this week. Also, just want to remind the board that we have our annual management retreat this week. That'll take place on Thursday at the convention center, and that's when we get our leadership team together, our emerging leaders here in the county together each year for a one-day management retreat. That'll take place on Thursday. Lastly, I just have an update on the consent agenda item number 13. That's an item for reimbursement for 911 for the sheriff's office. The item stated that the reimbursement was for 57,784. That actually should be 50,000 reimbursement for that particular item. So I just wanted to make that statement to the record for the clerk's office. And with that, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Hoshihara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no updates this morning.
Well, for the last time in this career, isn't that something? Thank you for serving so faithfully the way that you have served Okaloosa County through your time with the sheriff's office, now your time as clerk, and with today being your last meeting as clerk. I know you'll be back, but your last meeting as clerk, will you bring us our minute?
I'll just tell you, I don't have anything from the clerk's office. I'll tell you from myself, it has been an honor to serve with the commission and the staff of the county the last 10 years. My team, I hope feel like we are better off after I've been here for 10 years than when I got here. I hope I left it a little better. My team is a great partner with your team, and it is a little bit of a sad day for me to go off. I enjoy this being part of the process. And I certainly feel like we talked to the other commissioners that rotated off and the commissioners that are here and have been here with me. I feel like we've left it better than when we got here. And so that's my challenge to you, is leave it better than when you got here. And thank you, sir. I have nothing else.
This time we'll take public comment. I have a few speaker cards. If you desire to be recognized for public comment, please complete a speaker appearance card with Mr. Tomalcheck in the back. You'll be recognized at the end of the meeting during the next opportunity for that. There will be multiple times for public comment today. We have some public hearings which will allow public comment. Many of you have already completed speaker cards for the public hearing, but I just wanted to be sure that you understood that the items handled in a public hearing will have a separate public comment time. We'll begin this morning with Kenny Fuller.
My name is Kenny Fuller.
Mr. Fuller, will you push the speak button? And I'm sorry if I didn't say it earlier, you have up to three minutes to cover any topic you would like.
Okay. My name is Kenny Fuller. I didn't know Mr. Peacock was retiring, but I want that fucker to know that he still can get in trouble regardless that he retired. So back, so this what I'm going to say. I want to talk to Thomas Andrew Palmer. I see where Mr., I missed it, where Ms. Gingerbroughton donated to your campaign. And I know that Florida statute 2734 where the, where the state attorney office can't ask the county commissioner for more investigators or money, you know, and so sometimes that can lead to favoritism. So I just wanted to know, I know you, and I just meeting Sherri Edward Cox. I don't really know y'all, you know. And the reason why I brought that up because y'all know me, because here's what y'all got, the police, y'all, all government agencies. You got, you got called to David access, the David computer that got everybody's driver's license number, address, signature, and medical disability information, social security number, data burst information, and emergency contact information. So DeSantis has signed the bill where a lot of your employees, not your employees, but government employee want to look up people, see what they finance, or see what dirt they can get on them and all that. And another thing that I'm bringing that I want, that I came here for is that under the restitution law, y'all owe me some money under the restitution law. Called injure defendants or people injured that y'all pay the bills, like for the public defenders and conflict attorneys and all that kind of stuff. And what I'm saying, the money is owed to me because we had a restitution hearing, and we went to court, and the guy owed me this certain amount of money, and I haven't received it. I have not received this money yet at all. And, and also, let me see what else. Well, I ain't really got much to say. I just really came to talk about my restitution money. And I just want you to know that I know more dealings that goes on than what you think I don't know. And far as that asshole over there, oh yeah, I forgot about you.
Mr. Fuller, that's your second time with language. Just be cautious. Thank you.
Okay, and you're a preacher, you tell me that, and y'all the one who killed Jesus? Please give me a fucking break, man.
Thank you for your time.
Hey, that's good, that's good. You do that. I cannot get in trouble for addressing you as an asshole. You can say the word nigga, you won't get in trouble. So fuck you.
Enjoy your day.
Yeah, good.
Next is Fred Butts. Fred Butts.
Fred, that means it's on, right?
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay. My name's Frederick Butts. I live here in Crestview. I know most of y'all don't like me because of where I stand on a lot of stuff. But I asked this during the town hall in Baker when Nathan Boils had this conversation. And how much is enough? Really, how much is enough? Over the last few years, we have destroyed more land than anybody else. We've done this rezoning plans, and now I'm reading that you want to do four houses on one house per acre? No, and I'm a small farmer in my spare time. And what are you going to tell the farmers, the people who grows the food? You know, people like that. You cannot possibly be inhumane enough to tell them that, I mean, when I moved here in 2000 after my service, this town was quiet, it was small, it was community-based where neighbors watched each other and watched out for each other. These days, you can't do that. That's how bad the trend has been. We got, I can't even begin to describe what I want to say right there. But we really need to be building with respect to the land and also do full accountability. You just got back from a trip from New Jersey. Is that correct, Mr. Mixon?
From New Jersey? No.
Or, okay, the historical ship that we are discussing about 10 million bucks, that now can't be moved. I've been following this for a long time now. They have a big issue right now. It's stuck in the mud. It can't move. So that 10 million bucks we just threw down the drain? It's not, it's not going anywhere for a while. So I would, you know, I would really think that y'all would actually be following that because that would mean we can go back to the table, renegotiate, or back out of the deal. Because if we're on the hook for 10 million bucks to pull that thing out, and by all means, she was, she still has a history to her. We need to renegotiate that deal or back out. Because to pull that thing out, that's going to be more money on our dime. And that's, you know, y'all guys going to take it out of our money anyway because the Tourism Development Council, how much money do they get out of the budget? How much? Because if you're not going to answer, these people more than smart enough to go looking into government archives to find out. So if you're not going to be honest with the people, you going to sit there and be silent? These people already know where to go find this information. So why not be honest? Come out and say it. And, you know, it is what it is. Because 10 million bucks without some kind of accountability, if something goes wrong, we need to be backing out of that deal. Let's pull the 10 million back, tell them, because I'm pretty sure there's a negotiated clause there if there was. And it being stuck in the mud and they can't pull it out, that gives us enough clause to pull out. Thank you.
Wade Merritt.
Good morning. Wade Merritt, 8015 Peacock Road, Baker, Florida, AKA Scamby Farms. So anyway, I'm here this morning to talk to you a little bit about something I run across some months back. It's a Okaloosa County Stormwater Awareness for the General Public little flyer. I don't know, I had one of these things in my wallet. I picked up and I wore it out. So I found me another. So anyway, it really, you know, we talk about, I think we can all agree that there's a stormwater problem in Okaloosa County. Because when I was running for county commissioner in the campaign, that was a major topic, was stormwater runoff. So obviously, that falls upon the county commissioner, public works and such and so on, along with other state and federal entities to take care of that. These are not my words, so I'm just going to kind of read some of these things here. So the thing to do with the stormwater awareness is to prevent stormwater runoff from washing harmful pollutants into local streams, rivers, lakes, and coastal waters. So that is a major source of water pollution in stormwater is stormwater runoff. So this is from the front page of your public works, but it don't have the pretty picture. So anyway, so I'm only going to highlight some of the major things. Stormwater Division is responsible for the operation and maintenance of stormwater systems. All stormwater issues and complaints- All stormwater issues and complaints are investigated. The county stormwater system is classified as a MS4. The county stormwater, let me see, the MS4 program is permitted activity that is strictly regulated. So when you go into the guide, the guide for Okaloosa County illicit discharge ordinance, only I highlighted a couple of things. Stormwater is from rainfall events which allow, which flows over the ground or pavement without soaking into the ground. The storm sewer system includes roadside ditches, gutters, inlets, catch basins, and underground pipes that collect stormwater and convey it from our streets, parking lots, and yards. The receiving waters includes wetlands, that's the key there. So there's nothing left of that one. So this here was a traffic impact analysis that was done for the Buckhaven subdivision up in Baker. Obviously, we know that all subdivisions in the north end of the county are hot topics because most people do not want them to live here and reside here. But that's neither here nor there because it's allowed currently under the Land Development Code. And some will argue that there is some question about whether it is allowable. But at any rate, that's not what I'm here to talk about today. But Section 7 of the, I guess that would be the Buckward Road width analysis. This talks about how they're going to widen the road and they're going to do things to the road to make it better for the water runoff and traffic and such and so on. So this is absolutely not my forte. This is not something that, that, that I'm in the know of when it comes to traffic studies and water runoff. But what caught my attention was this company that done this study, that they said that they were going to run a 36-inch pipe under the road, proposed to discharge into the wetlands. So it says it there and it says it here also, that they're going to dump the water into the wetlands. I'm only here to be proactive about this because obviously you already have a burden problem with wetlands, or not with wetlands, but with water runoff and stormwater runoff issues. So this is for me, just to let you know, that this is something that I found that is in the documents that could very well take place because the county, once they do that, the county takes over that project. And we don't need to be creating stormwater problems, that we already have enough as it is. So this is a potential problem that needs to be looked at and corrected. Other than that, that's all I got. Thank you.
Pat Watkins.
My name is Pat Watkins. I live at 6087 Budmoltan Road in Crestview. I am opposed to the request for future land use changes and rezoning changes for the approximately 500 acres located in the Possum Ridge area of Okaloosa County. This application conflicts with or violates almost every clause stated in Florida statute 163.3177. It is also in conflict with the goal of the Okaloosa Comprehensive Plan, as well as many of the objectives and accompanying policies, specifically, but not limited to necessarily, objectives 2, 4, and 9. I'm not going to tell you what's objectives 2, 4, and 9, we can all look them up. But this application needs to be denied. Please deny it. Thank you.
All right, we'll recognize our visitor today, Representative from Florida City County Management Association, to present a certificate to the Okaloosa County Board of County Commissioners and County Administrator on the 30-year anniversary of International City County Management Association initial 1994 recognition of Okaloosa County as a commissioned manager form of government.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. County Commissioners, County Minister Hofstadt, County staff, and residents of Okaloosa County. Happy holidays. My name is Mark Ryan, and I'm a retired city manager. For more than 40 years, I managed three cities in Brevard County in Florida's east-central Florida, and now reside in Tallahassee. I've been appointed a volunteer senior advisor by the Florida City County Management Association and the International City County Management Association. Senior Advisors is a program for these organizations that makes available to members in their organizations the experience, advice, and support of respected retired managers of the profession. There are eight senior advisors in Florida. On behalf of the Florida City County Management Association, we're privileged to present to the Okaloosa County Board of County Commissioners with a certificate celebrating your 30th year as a council commission manager form of government, as recognized by the International City County Management Association. On behalf of the officers, board of directors, and membership of the FCCMA, we offer our sincere congratulations on this milestone achievement. The council commission manager former government was created to help separate the administration from direct political influence and establish merit-based principles and practices within local government. It is modeled after a corporations framework with voters and stockholders, selecting a board of directors to commission, who in turn appoint a manager administrator, the professional executive, to advise the commission and implement its actions and ordinances and policies. Florida's nearly 70% of 411 cities, towns, and villages operate under the council commission manager former government. And of the 67 counties, all but two are professionally managed. You have a commission that works together in a professional manner to make decisions and establish policies that are in the best interest of your stakeholders. Okaloosa County is fortunate to have a county administrator in John Hofstadt, leading your county. And Commissioner Hofstadt has a wealth of institutional knowledge of the community and is working hard with you, a county commission, committed to the betterment of all of Okaloosa County, its residents and business, along with the talented and dedicated staff to keep the county moving forward. Your professional staff represents you, the board of county commissioners, as they provide interaction with vital and vital services to the community with a focus on financial responsibility, sustainable growth, and community well-being. The relationship with the county and local municipalities and US Air Force is a tribute to the dedication of you, the board of county commissioners, and your professional staff. The county, through its talented administrator and team, have prioritized infrastructure projects such as the Southwest Crestview Bypass, the expansion of Dustin Fort Walton Beach Airport, and numerous other projects to enhance the county. The county and your professional management team are recognized throughout the state for initiatives that benefit the community. On behalf of the FCCMA and all other council commission manager communities within the state of Florida, we congratulate you, Okaloosa County, on this milestone achievement of 30 years of the council commission manager former government. And with that, we'd like to present a certificate to the administrator and chair and the board.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. John?
Commissioner Palmer, there you go, thank you. Here we go, guys. One, two, three, a couple more. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three, thank you.
My pleasure. Happy holidays.
All right, we'll move to the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull number three for discussion.
Free, by Commissioner Ketchel.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull number seven.
Seven, Commissioner Goodwin.
Make a motion to bring everything forward except three and seven.
A motion to approve all minus three and seven.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Palmer. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with an aye?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Commissioner Ketchel, item three.
I just wanted to bring up number three because Doc Collinsworth had come to talk with us about his lease on the, on his hangar. And we were able to resolve that, but I really want to shout out, give a shout out to your staff, Tracy Stage staff, the airport, and all the work that you did behind the scenes to make this happen. He's very happy now, we were able to sell his hangar. And, and so that's, that's a good thing, and he's very pleased about that. So thank you for your work on that. And with that, a motion for approve. Please, Will.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Palmer. It should be noted that we were able to get all parties happy in the deal, but there were no extensions made. And so, so that's successful because that was the original.
Very good important point that he asked for that, so, but yeah, he's very pleased. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with an aye? Passes unanimously. Commissioner Goodwin, number seven.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so this, of course, is the county's 2025 legislative priorities and funding requests. Um, I, you know, we, we took this up previously, and I know staff went back and did some work on it. And, um, you know, as presented, it's got two items in it that I want to discuss specifically. Um, and the first being the funding request for the SS United States. I'm not in favor of leaving that as a request for that, of an appropriation from the state for, for that project. I think we've got to look to other sources, you know, tourism tax dollars to pay for that. So I would be, and I can make this in the form of a motion if need be, but because there's two issues, I wanted to kind of explain it. So I, I would be in favor of taking that off the funding request. And then the second item is on the legislative item related to the Burt Harris Act. I can, I can get behind leaving it on, but I would like to reframe it as follows. And I'll tell you that I sent this language already in an email to Lynn Hoshihara and Sheila Fitzgerald. So I know it's not always well-received when I go on prolonged amendments from, from the microphone. But this is what I would like to see that say, and I'll, like I said, I'll make this a motion, that we rephrase the Burt Harris item to say that Okaloosa County encourages the legislature to convene a joint select committee to study the Burt Harris Act to include its objectives, effectiveness, and impacts by region and statewide, and potential amendments to help the act better achieve policy goals. So with that revised language being suggested and removing the SS United States from the funding requests, I would move to approve item seven with those modifications.
I'll second that. And I'd also like to say that I had, in, in discussions with Ms. Fitzgerald, also asked that that should be taken off as well, that to me, it should not be a funding request. Well, and I'm going to say again, it was a 4-1 vote at that time. Without these two new commissioners on here, I don't know how it would have gone. But I was not in favor of that vote, still am not in favor of that vote. Recently went to Philadelphia, did not look at the vote. So I feel strongly about that. But I like your, your idea on the Burt Harris Act because we need, we need clarification on that moving forward. Thank you for doing that, Commissioner.
Mr. Palmer.
Uh, so two things. Can we consider these as separate motions? For, for one, for the Burt Harris Act, and the second for the SS United States? Because I'm going to have different thoughts on each of those.
I, I can make those as separate motions if they're accepted as separate seconds, I guess.
Sure.
Okay, so take the first motion as the funding for the SS US?
Yeah, okay. Okay. And so, so, so two things for the Burt Harris. I, I love the idea. Um, I would, if, if possible, and I'm not sure exactly how this, you know, you'd probably be better with the language than I would be. Um, but something that, that also provides guidelines for implementation, uh, since we're asking for them to take a look at the, you know, take a look at the Burt Harris Act and, and give us better sort of the framework. But it would be great if we had sort of guidelines for implementation. I don't, again, I'm not sure exactly how that would go, but I think that would be something that would be helpful. Um, on the SS United States, so this is something that I think is going to be very important for, for my district and Commissioner Ketchel's district as well. Um, you know, one of the things that we talk about when we're, uh, when we're talking about tourism and tourism development, um, you know, the, and, and I know this is not a vote on the boat itself. It's more a vote on whether we're doing the appropriations from the, from the state. But I just need to, to start with, with how important this is. You know, when we're talking about raising the bar of tourism for, for our, for our districts. Um, and, you know, this is the type of thing that's going to change some of the character of the tourism that comes to our district when they go and they're going to spend, you know, large, large spends to go out and do, uh, you know, do some scuba diving and, and things like that brings tourists. That's going to, that's going to, you know, have a whole different sort of mindset when they, when they go to, um, you know, when they, when they come here for, for tourism, right? So I think it's something that's very important for my district, I'm very supportive of it. My vote would not have been different than, than Commissioner Ponder's if, if I had been on the board at the time. Um, but I, I think it's, I think this is a huge win for our area, for our community, puts us on the map, gives us national news. Um, and we're going to have just an amazing asset out there in the Gulf that, uh, that's just going to, you know, highlight our area and highlight the tourism and highlight some of the great vendors that we have in our, in our area as well. Um, and so when I was in discussions about this, particularly for the appropriations, um, I know that it can be viewed as sort of a zero-sum game where if, if you're going to ask over here, then they're going to say, well, maybe, you know, we gave you money over here, so we're not going to give you money over here. I was told that is not the way that it generally works. Um, and I could be wrong about that, but, but my, um, sort of my take on it is we've, you know, we've asked for $10 million, up to $10 million for the whole project. Uh, so far, we don't expect the county to, to be the, you know, even the, the largest donor to that $10 million project. Um, it would be great to get funding from as many sources as possible. And I think if we're asking, if, you know, if we're going for the ask, we, we might as well ask. And if they say no, that's fine, we'll look at all the other funding sources as well. But I, I view this as one funding source that we should probably pursue. Um, and so I'm going to have, you know, a different take on that. So that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Cox.
So I too probably support the bifurcation of these two. Um, but I'll address the, the vote first. And so with respect to the two hour funding the vote, excuse me, if you don't, if you don't mind me calling the vote, the vote. I'm, I'm not for taking dollars that could be otherwise earmarked for transportation, for roads and bridges, and the things that I ran on. I mean, those are the things that are going to continue to be my first priority. Um, so I'm not against the boat, but I'm against us using an additional $800,000 of our money for the boat. So I'm, I'm for using a different revenue stream than that. Um, and now I'm going to move on to the other, and that's the Burt Harris portion of it. Um, so the Burt Harris piece of the legislative priorities, I feel like is important. I talked to several department heads about this. And that is because I understand, from what I understand, the, um, the reexamination of the Burt Harris Act can give us more legal latitude to implement some of the, um, the planning study recommendations. Um, as it is, per my understanding, with, um, with every, every conversation that I've had with our legal and, and others, the Burt Harris Act prevents us from legally being able to implement the, the planning study as it exists, as it currently exists. Because of those ambiguities, I feel strongly that if we, and I talked to Ms. Fitzgerald about keeping this on the, the legislative priorities, I felt like that was a good idea to get a clearer understanding from the Florida legislative body how we could better maneuver the Burt Harris Act so that, you know, counties can better manage their own land use codes. Um, so for me, I, I think that that, that is a good thing to stay on the agenda, and I, and I voiced that in those meetings.
Thanks.
Chairman, if I could have one more bite?
Sure.
So I do understand Commissioner Palmer's desire for the boat. Uh, I do understand that. And I also understand, Commissioner Cox, I agree with you that this is not the place to go for funding. We do have a lot of funding sources if we're to move forward with the vote, and it appears we are going to move forward. So I would be in favor of not asking the legislature for that funding when in fact, that to me, those limited dollars from the state, because we do live within a balanced budget within the state, those should go towards projects in our district that I think that the majority of our citizens care about, the roads and bridges and so forth. So in a sense, I'm agreeing with you both. Um, I wouldn't change my, my vote on the vote. But, uh, yeah, but, uh, even though I'm very much in favor of tourism, uh, I'm not sure how many people will have access to this, but I know it'll be a worldwide thing where people are supposedly going to come in and be able to scuba dive and so forth, but most people can't get 20 feet out to do that that live locally. So thank you for that opportunity to speak again.
Y'all have definitely broken some type of nautical rule by continuously calling it a boat, but this, the ship. Made it to Philadelphia. I'm not sure how you didn't get to see it. It, it's kind of a incredibly large, but.
Can I be clear?
Yes, you can. When they bring it by, hopefully they'll be within a mile. And so you'll be able to see it when you look out into the Gulf. But moving forward with this, uh, taking item one as, uh, funding the ship off, um, I, I would like to ask, uh, Ms. Adams, if you're okay with entertaining some questions. Thank you for that unprompted, unprepared. Wonderful. On the job testing. Um, visit Florida money. It, does that come out of a legislative ask or is that a separate pot?
It comes out of a separate pot.
Okay.
Ours, our money?
Yes. If we were to pursue visit Florida to help with this, uh, ship endeavor because of the economic impact that we've already seen in the study and how grand it would be in, in the return on investment.
Right. The way to go through that would be Triumph and we have to make a play that it benefits Northwest Florida. We've already, um, have jointly purchased and sunk, uh, a vessel this past year for, um, for the Bay Walton and Okaloosa County. So we could go, certainly go down that road. Um, it, it'll just boost diving for all of us, which is a big effort as part of the 10, uh, $10 million grant that we got for the next three years diving.
And the 10 million that you bring up, um, separate from, from this, but the 10 minute, 10 million towards the total project of the ship. How much did we pay for the ship?
Two million, one million.
And how much are they required by contract to put back into our economy with a museum?
That's going to be a multimillion dollar project, uh, ultimately, when that gets done. So we, we don't know the details, full details yet, but it'd be in the millions.
So for the better understanding of, of people involved, the $10 million is total project, not the purchase of a ship.
Correct.
Ship was purchased for a million dollars within understanding that they're going to have a multimillion dollar impact by putting in a land-based museum.
That's correct.
Okay.
Outside of that.
So do you see benefits to going this route with this being your department?
Absolutely. I've, I've been to multiple places over the last few months, including London, um, where we had nothing but discussions about this. They don't want to come visit our beaches. They want to come and do other things and dive. They're going to the Maldives to go beaches and whatnot. So they want to come here for different reasons. We've had multiple, um, multiple requests by other, um, institutes like Woods Hole, um, and other to do research on it, which is another educational benefit, and they'll dive it year round.
How much funding of your budget do you use towards media?
Um, about $400,000.
And how much have you paid these new sources to cover the ship so far?
I haven't paid them anything to cover the ship.
You have any idea what that might be worth?
Oh yeah. The media culven sea as a month ago was about $6 million. So in that, in that we would have had more, um, we will have more coverage when we move her. And when we, um, celebrate it, we have, we have, um, journalists from all over the world ready to come to not only follow the journey, but to come when we sink her and to dive her.
Thank you. Sorry to ask questions.
That's okay. Anything else?
Here I was standing right.
Commissioner Palmer? So, um, I have just a couple of questions. Um, do we know what the economic impact of the risk and he has been uh, as, as a sort of competitor?
I have, I, I can't, I don't want to say it out loud because it's in my head and I'm not sure if I'm right, but I will follow up with you. Um, we actually have, um, the TDC in Scambia County wants to also be part of this and put some money towards it. Again, that's that regional benefit. Um, they want it close so that we can actually claim the two largest, um, reefs, uh, in Northwest Florida. And, um, you know, just that impact alone too. I can find out from you, Commissioner Palmer.
Okay.
You have it correct. Sorry.
Yeah. The Haas Institute, uh, uh, of Western Florida University estimated $3 million impact a year, but that was decades ago. So we're estimating it closer to five or six million per year now for the new boat.
So, so the three million figures is what I'd heard before. And so I, I see that as a, as a huge win for us potentially.
That was 20 years ago.
Right.
Right.
Right. And so, and so the other thing is the risk any, as I'm, I understand, has also, uh, sunk into the mud where it was, where it was placed. And where we're going to be, uh, placing the SS United States, um, is not at that same risk. And so it should be a, a, maybe even a more attractive asset, uh, for this region as well. And so, um, I, I think that's, I think it's again, it's another huge win for us. It, it raises the bar on tourism. Um, and so, uh, can you talk about that?
So the way that we've been talking, um, with journalists and whatnot is, is the level of depth. So she's going to be in 180 feet, but the top deck will be in 50 to 60 feet. So as more and more people come to learn how to scuba dive, they can first of all, get certified while they're here. Um, there's more and more dive shops along Northwest Florida that are taking part in all this. Um, then they can learn to dive and as it's that generational thing, as they continue to come, they'll continue to work their way down. The, she's a massive vessel and so you can't even dive her fully in, you know, a couple of days. So I think the long-term and the repeat visitation that we'll get, um, it certainly was the talk of the town in, in overseas. I mean, nobody wanted to talk about it. They, they love the beaches. They're really pretty. So is the south of France. Tell me about your, um, your entire network of, of reefs.
And so the SS United States will be accessible at 60 feet. How deep is the risk any?
Uh, the risk is over 130 feet, which requires a advanced diving, uh, person. So we will have advanced divers, intermediate divers, and then technical divers. Uh, all three will be able to be served by the vessel.
So, so again, to, to me, a more attractive asset. So thank you for.
Yeah. I think it's going to just draw divers from all over the world. There's just no question. I mean, I, I didn't make that up when I was over there. That's what they wanted to talk about. We actually just had the first of several stories in Garden and Gun over her. I met the publisher while I was in London, immediately did a story and just the reach that we're getting in Garden and Gun is fantastic for us.
Thanks. Uh, Commissioner Goodwin, I, um, the reason I wanted to ask these questions was to help me better understand whether or not there would be legislatures that live in, uh, the majority landmass of Florida, the portion that gets the most of the money. Um, that may have heard about this, that may have an interest and see it as a Florida totality project and not just isolated to come give us some money. I definitely don't want to do anything that's going to be taken by the legislature as, uh, make a decision. Do we get money for roads? Do we get money for bridges? Do we get money for stormwater? Or are you going to give us money for a ship? And I really believe the, the committee formulation and the way it's separated there, that it wouldn't put, um, that decision at, at their forefront. And, but I, I do understand the concerns. But I wanted to, to ask those so that I better understood where we were going. Did you have more?
If, if I could ask Jennifer, uh, just to clarify, um, and I'll be, you know, and I want to make sure it's, you know, that, that there's no obscurity here. I definitely voted in favor of moving forward with, with the ship, um, and, and have supported that. This is, this is simply a, in my mind, you know, logistics and housekeeping issue on, you know, which checkbook do we use to, or which checkbooks do we use to pay for this thing? If we don't ask for the legislative appropriation, I think it's 1.5 million. And if that's not funded. So if we take that off the table, do you view that as putting the SS United States project at serious risk of failure?
No, I don't. But I do, uh, but I do think it is a viable request to have it in there. Um, I think that we will, we will seek multiple funding sources as we already are. Um, it, but, uh, I, I, it's, it, it is appropriate for the ask, but I understand. Craig, do you want to chime in?
I. I don't think it puts it at risk. To, to answer your question, I agree with Jennifer and I agree with her on the second part too, that, that indeed it, it may be a viable risk because it may, I mean viable, um, ask in the sense that there are, uh, group, groups, national groups that are going to be asking for money that are sectioned out to Tallahassee, DEMA, for example, a national, uh, dive group. Um, so it, it doesn't, I don't know that hurts us competing against something else. Um, I don't know that it would come down to that choice, but I understand your logic and, and respect that. So.
One follow-up on that then. So do you feel confident, um, that if we proceed with this project and say we don't, whether we ask or not for the 1.5 million, we may not get it anyway. If we don't get the 1.5 million, either because we don't ask or it's just simply not approved, do you feel confident that we will be able to proceed with the project, fund the project in a way that leverages multiple sources without using any general fund or Okaloosa County property tax dollars to pay for it? Can we avoid dipping into those dollars?
No plans to do that.
So.
No plans at all. It comes out of the tourist development tax budget.
I appreciate that. And, and I want to point that out because I think, you know, I've been clear with, with you, Jennifer, and with Alex and, and Craig and, and, you know, both in private conversations and, and, and conversations out here about my viewpoint on it, that I support it. But we've got to have, you know, funding partners, um, you know, and I think that's a lot of, uh, maybe non-government funding partners that want to chip in and, and, and put, you know, put their skin in the game to this. Um, and then using your resources through the, the taxes you derive from tourists, those that don't live here and pay property taxes necessarily. Um, that that's been the key for me to support the project. And so, um, I'm very happy to hear that you feel like we're going to stay on that course because I think that's critical. Um, uh, you know, because I, I suspect part of the concern that I hear from our locals about the project is whether or not it puts in peril some other, some other, uh, core function of our county government that they need to support either their, their businesses, their children, their livelihood, their day-to-day life. And I want to be crystal clear, this will not imperil that. And, and so I guess in a way, I'm going to stick by my motion to take that off the legislative appropriation. Not because I think it's an improper appropriation. I totally get that that is illegitimate. It, it checks the boxes of being, you know, um, you know, legitimate to ask for. But from a policy perspective, I don't want there to be any, um, ambiguity of, of where I stand. And I'm afraid that if I put that on there, knowing that, yes, they're different pots, but still it has the appearance of competing with my stormwater requests, my road requests and those sorts of things. I don't want any of my constituents to think that I get anywhere near putting those dollars at risk in favor of, of the ship, uh, the USS United States. So for those reasons alone, I, I'm going to stand by the motion. It may not have the traction to get over the, the, the finish line today, but I think it's important. But I don't want you or any of our participants or constituents to think that that means I don't like the project. I do think the project will be good for tourism and I think it will have some residual benefits for locals. So I, I still think it's a good thing. It's all about what checkbook we're using to, to pay for it. And that, that's really where it comes from.
It's the tourism checkbook.
Exactly.
And then I just want to just also say it, more than just the vessel, it's also the museum that will come along with it, which is very important. I mean, just the stuff that the conservancy has protected and preserved. Um, we have people calling us every day, you know, that want to tell their story. We, we need to, we're talking yesterday about asking NPR to come and do a story corps because so many people want to contribute to the legacy and not let those memories go. So that's another impact that we'll have by bringing her to Destin Fort Walton Beach and saving her.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. So. Uh, say one thing before we call for the vote on that. I don't want us to be split on a priority list that we're giving to another government body saying, will you please agree with us, even though we couldn't all agree on this one? So I, so I'm willing to, to back away from, uh, desiring that it, for a year and see what next year looks like. Because, uh, i- if we're still not quite to the fulfillment of our goals and, and we know there are separate buckets, I, I think then we should pursue, um, in the future potentially, uh, that. But I, I, I don't feel comfortable taking a legislative priority list, an appropriation priority list, saying even the five of us couldn't agree on it. And so, um, so, so I'm going to, to side with you in that and, uh, and, and withdraw my personal feelings on pursuing that funding, knowing that it comes from a second pot, but you're concerned of the optics. And so I'll, I'll, I'll yield to that concern. Um, so.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
So again, my opposition was originally, just because we have new commissioners here and not the same audience, is, uh, this was my concern from the beginning, that people do not understand how we could be, and I know it's a million, two million, whatever, $10 million, how we could be sinking a $10 million boat in the Gulf of Mexico with the hope that a lot of tourists would come here and a lot of divers from other parts of the world. When people are struggling with their roads, their mortgage, I know it's different pots of money, but it's very difficult. I was admonished at the time by a sitting commissioner, oh, people understand this. No, they don't. And if you think they don't, we get the coast comments. People were writing on there. This is outrageous. Why are we doing this? So we go back and forth with trying to explain to people, as you so well said it today, the checkbooks. There's different pots of money where we can get money and so forth. But that was my opposition at the time. So I just wanted to say.
Chairman. Um, so I understand that, that, uh, some, some people, you know, I think we've got a very, you know, educated, um, population. And I, I, I think that many do understand, but I, but I, I do understand that some don't, uh, but we do. And, and that's, you know, kind of our responsibility is to make sure that we are making the decisions that are right for the county. Um, and, you know, so, so I, I do understand that and, and I, I have a, I have a really, really difficult time, uh, voting for optics. Um, because I do understand that it's separate pots of money. Um, however, given that there is potential to bring it back in the future, um, our next legislative priority is I am willing to vote for optics for a pause in this request. Um, and so I, I will, I will side with you guys. I, I do understand the necessity to present a united front when we're going and asking for this money. Um, and so I, so I do understand that, um, and I want to, I want to play nice. But, but I, but I do have a very difficult time in voting for optics. And so that is not what I'm doing. My vote is to vote for, you know, to put it on the, possibly the next legislative priorities list.
Sir, by any chance an amendment to the motion? To potentially word in a, a way that's not a negative, it'd be of, uh, actually canceling, but more towards the idea of postponing potentially?
I guess, let me, I'll say that my motion was not intended to have any, any impact on next year's requests. I, let's be honest, we may be in a very different economic time next year.
That's right.
Um, and I, and it may be a time when I think our, our citizens may more embrace that, that type of thing. But right now, I think folks are still feeling the pinch of the last four years. And it's been tough. So it's not to the exclusion of that, but I, I'd rather not overcomplicate this one if, if that's acceptable.
Will you give me your motion one more time?
So simply to remove the SS United States from the, from the appropriations request for 2025.
Great. Thank you. And you have second and stands, Commissioner Ketchel, right? All right. All in favor, signify with a I.
Aye.
Any opposed with no? That passes unanimously. And moving to the legislative item of Burt Harris Act, I. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could I, based on the comments that, um, that we heard, um, I'd like to offer maybe, um, a modification to the, to the, uh, the way that I phrase that and, and see if the seconder would be willing to accept that. In a, in addition to what I've already stated, I would like to add that we also ask the, um, that the joint select committee, uh, be asked to study, uh, amendments that would clarify the intent on implementation.
Oh, just my second.
Great. Thank you. Any additional comments? All in favor, signify with a I. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And then we should take one more vote for the item as a whole. If there's a motion for number seven minus those two, or with those changes. Okay, great. Any additional comment? All in favor, signify with a I. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We have four public hearings on today's agenda. The first is to receive public testimony prior to adoption of an ordinance mending the comp plan by adopting the updated comp plan text amendment. Uh, Mr. Camper.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, again, we have three public hearings from Growth Management this morning. The first one concerns amendment of the conference of plan pursuant to the evaluation appraisal report. This actually began back in September 2023 when our seven-year cycle was up. And as the state has amended the statutes, now basically the, uh, responsibility of the EIR is determined if, you know, the conference of plan has remained current with the various, um, amendments, the statutes that have. that have occurred over the preceding seven years, and also to make sure that incorporates the appropriate planning horizons. When the EIR was transmitted back in 2023, there was a horizon of a 10-year planning horizon. That was modified later that same year to include a 10- and 20-year horizon. And so when we got back our evaluation letter from the Commerce Department, which is what they call Department of Economic Opportunity these days, they had commented that while it does have a 10-year horizon, it does not have a 20-year. So what you have in front of you today does include a 20-year horizon, and that is reflected both in the planning profiles, which were extended to include through 2045s and the population projections, et cetera, as well as in the various policies, the comp plan, as well as the title of the comp plan itself. The second comment the Commerce Department had was that the plan did not include language requiring that the county consider the feasibility of extending central sanitary sewer to any existing or proposed development with 50 units or greater. Okay? Now, the language isn't clear on what consider the feasibility means, but the language was not in there. That was again a 2023 addition. And so the sanitary sewer element of the comprehensive plan has been amended to reflect those comments specifically. Going through and working with the Water and Sewer Department, there is antiquated language and objective wanted as attendant policies that speak to a 2009 sewage master plan that the county ultimately didn't undertake, so that has been removed. Has that outdated language in the policies of talking about water-saving fixtures several years ago? Now, that was all added to the Florida Building Code, so that's now redundant, and it's not needed in the comp plan. Policy 1.3 old language, which was establishing specific levels of service for the various utility plants themselves. Working with Water and Sewer, they feel that one standard should be applied to all the county facilities. Now, it'll be 300 gallons per person per day is, I'm sorry, 350 gallons per person per day is, per unit per day is what they're looking for. And finally, in regard to whether we consider the feasibility of extending water and sewer lines to any project existing or proposed of 50 units or greater. Basically, we put language in a new policy 2.4 that requires the county, basically, in consultation with the Department of Environmental Protection, who's going to be taking over the subterranean program from Department of Health, as well as the County Health Department and the wastewater treatment providers, to require subterranean users connect sanitary sewer service when it is available and to consider the feasibility of connecting developments 50 or more to central sewer pipes within the 10-year planning horizon as required by the statute. So this is not saying, it's not committing the county to doing a sewer expansion program right off the bat. That obviously is a very expensive and complicated undertaking. We would look to Water and Sewer to take the lead on. But it does mean that when we look at comp plan amendments and developments, we're going to have to look at, is it feasible to connect? And, you know, for the record, when you're talking about single-family homes, when it says when it is available, available means that the sewer line is in the right of way serving that particular property. It doesn't create a mandate that if it's 10 years, I'm sorry, 10 miles down the road, now you have to run a sewer line. It doesn't do that. The statute says when it's available, you connect. And for a single-family home, available means when it's in the right of way. So basically, what the proposed change does is it more closely ties our comprehensive plan to the requirements of the floor statutes. And finally, in order to make those changes, we had to renumber the policies in the sanitary sewer element because we're taking stuff out, adding that new policy in. And finally, just as a matter of housekeeping, the state did change the acreage that was separated at a large scale and a small-scale plan amendment used to be 10 acres, it became 50. So basically, the comp plan has been changed to recognize that 50 acres is the threshold for a large-scale plan amendment. These changes are identified in the staff report and the attachments. I apologize for the length, but the way comp plan is based, it does have to include the planning profiles because that's where you see the 20-year projections for population and water and things like that. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Going to open for public comment? I have no speaker cards for this item. Is there anyone from the public desiring to speak? Okay.
My name is Jeremiah Kayler. I live at 6301 Possum Ridge Road. I just want to say, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into this plan, and it follows up to the reason I'm really here today. But this isn't an easy endeavor. So people have spent years, decades, hours of their life putting into these policies, and I want to see these policies actually enforced. They're written for a reason, and there's a trend within the county to ignore them. Mr. Camper has spent a lot of time updating this, making sure it's valid, and I'm here to ensure that the county actually follows the policy that's being approved. Because it's not nuanced, it's not hard to follow, and it's actually pretty lenient. But there are people taking advantage of this county, of this land, and leaving the citizens with the tax burden. I have neighbors, I've seen it. You can drive around, you can use Google Maps Street View. There's potholes, it's falling apart, it's obvious. And the citizens, we had people speaking earlier today, the Inspire Report. Anywhere you ask somebody, it's about traffic, it's about the conditions, it's about the infrastructure. The policy allows us to develop efficiently, but we have to follow it. If you don't follow it, it doesn't work. So I just ask you to consider what's being proposed, consider the purpose of this, because I do believe it's important to follow it as it's written. If it needs to be changed, this would have been the opportunity to change it. And I read over it, and none of the things that are going to be mentioned in the next item were changed. They are the same. So I just ask you to think about the work that goes into this and that we enforce it as it's written. Thank you.
Mr. Coller, if you'll see Mr. Tomalcheck there and complete a card for that comment. Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners? Mr. Goodwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick clarifications from Elliot or Mr. Camper. First of all, these amendments are primarily or exclusively aimed at reconciling our comprehensive plan with current statutory updates. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is not where we're necessarily tweaking our own policy. It's where we're taking statewide policy that's mandated and making our code become compliant with statewide policy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the policy is expressed through the statutes.
Correct, right. And so I just want to, I want to make sure that there's not a misunderstanding that, hey, you know, this is the board, this is the board's response to the Inspire effort. This is not, this is a different, this is a different process that takes place that we've done, you know, during my tenure here. And Commissioner Ketchel, I'm sure you can recall doing several of these where we get the groupings of updates from statewide law, and we have to synthesize it. And thank goodness, we have somebody like Elliot, who seems to memorize these codes word by word and figures out how to do all that redlining. Because it becomes quite a task. I mean, the attachment to this item is voluminous, to say the least. The other thing I wanted to ask you about, and really for purposes of pointing out, one of the things that stood out to me the most in these changes was that I believe that we are, because of state law mandate, we are changing the definition of what is a minor development. We're changing that from 10 acres or less to 50 acres or less. Isn't that right?
Yes, what it does, it changes the review process. Large-scale amendment, formerly 10 acres, now 50 acres. 10 acres would have to go to the state for coordinated state review through various state agencies. They, the legislature increased that to 50 acres, and that is what this does, ties us back to the statute.
So in other words, right, this is a change that we didn't decide, the state of Florida decided.
Correct.
And in essence, you can read, I think, between the lines or directly. You don't even have to read between the lines, read the actual lines. It will, it will make it easier to develop parcels over 10 acres and up to 50 acres than it was prior to the change.
Yes, because it does have a less rigorous view at the state level.
So I just, and again, I mean, because I can see where this could go, that, hey, you know, Okaloosa County has taken the minor from 10 to 50, we have no choice. And folks, it will open it up more to make that process easier, and that is state law. And unless Elliot and our attorneys tell us otherwise, I think we actually have to do this.
Yes, sir.
So I just, that's a big one, and I want to point it out because it could sound counterintuitive to the entire conversation that we've been having over the past year with our constituents about the north planning. But again, we are a county, and we are, you know, in the, you know, in the levels of priority and authority, we fall below the state, of course. And so this is something we have to do. Anyway, I just wanted to point out that was in there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve or disapprove the adoption? Motion by Commissioner Palmer. Second by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a I? Passes unanimously. The next public hearing is to consider a large-scale plan amendment for property located on Possum Ridge Road. Mr. Camper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is two items. One is the large-scale future land use map amendment on Possum Ridge Road, along with a companion request for rezoning, which would be for the same property. Lynn, do you have any comments on the legislative versus? Okay, thank you. This hearing is for transmittal to the state of Florida. 10 acres or 50 acres is moot point because this one is 498 acres. So this is a large-scale future land use map amendment with an underlying rezoning. Should the future land use map amendment be approved? Specifically, it's a request from Seaside Engineering on behalf of Christopher Riles relating to property located north of Possum Ridge Road and generally east of State Road 85. The request is to change the comprehensive plan future land use map from rural residential and agriculture to low-density residential. If the future land use map amendment is approved, the applicant has submitted a companion request to rezon the property from rural residential and agricultural to R1 or a more restrictive zoning district. The subject property is 498 acres, more or less. This is the transmittal hearing for the state planning review. Basically, you can see the subject property there, it's outlined in view on the screen. And this is what's kind of surrounding. You see that the land use to the north is primarily timberland and other like natural settings, and then to the south and some to the west, you've got some single-family homes and some other development, which also you can see on the south there in the aerial photograph. The zoning, you can see right now that the subject properties are shown and hatched. Got a larger chunk of it is currently agriculture. To the east and then to the west, you have land that is currently loaded, rural residential. The rural residential does a bit, low-density residential in two places on the western side. And if the future land use map amendment is reselling or approved, this is what the land use map and the zoning atlas will look like. Okay? Basically, this is a very long staff report and a long amendment. So I would rather than go through the whole thing line by line, if it's acceptable to the chair and the board, I'd just like to move the staff report and all its attachments into the record as part of this discussion and basically go through and then point out that this was heard by the planning commission during its regular announcement meeting of November 14, 2024, and they did recommend approval. The military representative for the planning commission was not in attendance. It did not provide any written comments or objections prior to. There was a number of citizens that spoke at the planning commission meeting in opposition, primarily based on traffic issues, wildlife, emergency services, infrastructure, and general concerns for urban sprawl. And if you look at an attachment for the planning commission minutes are included in there. The agenda item was properly advertised in the Northwest Florida Daily News on November 22, 2024, and by way of public notice posted, and certified return receipt letters were provided to all property owners as required by the county code. The board can approve or deny the request of future land use map amendment. And then if it votes to approve, it can also consider when it comes back from the state's review, the rezoning at that time. We would open up both the rezoning and the future land use map for comments today so that we'll have two hearings on the rezoning as well. But should the board of county commissioners choose to deny the future land use map amendment, the rezoning would also not be able to go forward since both the future land use map and the zoning have to be in agreement with one another. So I guess at this point, I'll shut up and answer any questions anybody has. And then, of course, we'll bring it back through the board for decisions after public input. So, Mr. Chairman, do you have any questions?
At this time, I do not. Okay. We have an extensive list for public comment regarding this item. If you don't mind, please keep it less than three minutes and also keep it focused to this item. We'll begin by Linda Tuggle.
Good morning, my name's Linda Tuggle. I live at 6087 Terrace Lane, 32536. I've lived there for 40 years, 40 years in the same location. One house, one acre, and lots of trees, lots of trees. I am urging you to deny the zoning request, and I really, after hearing Mr. Camper, I'm trying not to feel like this was a setup. I really feel, I understand there are state statutes, I understand this county needs to follow them. What I don't understand is the same thing several people have already said, when is enough? The man from Baker mentioned, when is enough? It sounds to me like there will never be enough because the comprehensive plan in place is not being followed, which was verified by the Inspire Report. For the new members of the board, welcome. I'm very sorry to say that there are many, many of us who feel like our voice is not being heard when we are at the planning commission. On the beautiful building, it says, "Of the people, for the people, and by the people." And there's a lot of people, and we are people. And I would certainly hope that the decisions made by this board are not allowing certain people a louder voice than other people. We talk a lot in this meeting about sustainable growth. It's been mentioned twice. Sustainable growth. The dictionary defines sustainable growth as a social goal that involves people living together in a way that is balanced, respectful of the environment, the economy, and equity. Let's talk about four key words I hear: balanced, respectful, environment, and equity. I'm afraid the word everyone else on this board is hearing is the word economy. I would certainly hope that knowing, as per the Inspire Report, that this zoning request is outside of the designated area as per your comprehensive plan and is now designated as urban sprawl. It is outside of the urban sprawl boundary that it would be clear to you commissioners that this should be denied. It was mentioned earlier, Objective 9 in the Inspire Report mentions, without having clear policy guidance in your comprehensive plan, without clear policy guidance tying future development to the availability of infrastructure, including and especially sanitary sewer.
Let's try and wrap it together.
This existing pattern will continue. This existing pattern will continue. That's our problem. This existing pattern will contin- continue. Here's the map. Each of you received an email yesterday with the map. Urban sprawl, outside of the boundary.
Thank you. Herb? I'm sorry, sir. Okay.
Understood. My name's Herb Winknick. I live at 6484 Possum Ridge Road. I'm here to oppose, um, the Possum Ridge approval application. Since she went over, she can have some of my time because I'm not going to take long. So I know that the applications for the designation of 500 acres, and I know the developer went on record and said that he's only building 691, but you still have to plan for the actual builds, and I believe that was brought up at the planning, uh, meeting. Is that not right, Ms. County Attorney? That you still have to plan for the 2,000 homes on the property? Yes, so it's not 691 homes that you're looking at. You're looking at 2,000. With everything that everybody else is going to bring up here. And again, you're outside the comp plan. And there's already enough homes in the pipeline to meet all the future goals that the comp plan has talked about, the universities have talked about, everybody else is going to talk about. I'm with them. Please deny this application for the rezoning of 500 acres. And Mr. Watkins can have the rest of my time. Thanks.
Uh, Mary White?
Hi, I'm Mary Winknick. I live at 6484 Possum Ridge Road. And, um, obviously, I'm in agreement with everything my husband said, but I have a couple of things to add to that. Um, this land is directly adjacent to my acreage, and will, will have a direct impact on my peaceful, quiet home. We are beekeepers. We have chickens, other livestock. We use holistic mans to manage our 10-acre property, and we don't want the additional pesticides, pollutions, et cetera. They're sure to come with the construction of, of this massive subdivision because he can say, as he said, 600 and somehow says as many times he wants, but it allows for up to 2,000. That's a lot of homes on a dead-end road. And I'm curious, have any of you ever driven out there? And if you haven't, I suggest you do. So you can see the what? Four hairpin turns we have at 90 degrees? I've almost been hit twice head-on, and I know traffic and all those other things, like the schools and the lack of, you know, fire department and, and sheriff department access that you already know isn't there. That seems to be continuously overlooked by this entire county. On top of that, um, the, the part that just makes me so angry is, okay, Mr. Riles knew what he was purchasing when he bought it. Everyone understands that, correct? Everyone has purchased a home and land in this, in this room? I'm sure you have. So when he purchased this, did he think it would be very easy to just come in and be like, hey, guys, I just need to get this rezoned so I can line my pockets a little bit more? Because that's, that's what it feels like in this county. We've been here for several years now, and it's the same thing over and over again. And you wonder why people call it, you know, lower Alabama. It's because it's like the good old boy system, and, and people say that like it's a joke, but it's, it's really aggravating. Like, when I go and, and purchase my property, I knew what my 10 acres were designated for. I knew I could put one home on it. That's what we did. If I wanted to build, you know, two or three extra homes for my, for my kids, you know, to make them live next door to me, I would have to go through quite a, quite a process to get that approved because of how my, my home is zoned. And I don't think that just because he has this, you know, larger amount of acreage, you know, that it should, oh, well, we're just going to pass it for him. It'll be fine. Like, when, when does that stop? Like, look at Baker, nor, you know, all of, all of northern part of the county. We live up here for a reason. If I wanted to be crowded in on a little tiny piece of land, I would, I would live, you know, south Crestview and anywhere below that where there is no peace and quiet or anything else because everyone is crammed together. We moved to a very clearly defined agricultural area. That, that is not hard to see. You can see it. So you need to take into account that, that is what is there now, and you need to follow it because people don't forget. And you need to care about the, the, the livelihood and the lives of everyone on that road, not just one person that has, you know, 500 acres. I really suggest you think hard about it. And that's all I have to say.
Bill Fortner?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Just wanted to take a moment to speak to a direction that our county seems to be headed. I had the fortunate occasion here a month ago to go meet a new granddaughter that was born in Savannah, Georgia. I know most of y'all have been there and, uh, recognize what an absolute gem that is located there in the state of Georgia. As I was driving down one of the streets, Abercrombie, I'm looking at these giant oaks that grow across the road, mansions of houses. And I think this is why people come here. This is why Savannah is so special. All of y'all have been to Tallahassee. You see the same things in Tallahassee. We're talking about looking horizon-looking. Well, North Okaloosa is part of that horizon that someone in Savannah over 100 years ago that was in positions similar to yours, looked and said, "We don't want community after community after community of D.R. Horton Homes," where they come in and they completely push down every tree, every shrub, destroy the entire ecosystem, animals that live in that area, and someone made those decisions. You're in that position today where you get to be the ones to make those decisions. Right now, what we're seeing is like proposals like this. We're seeing decisions that are being developer-driven rather than citizen-driven. Somebody comes in, "We got enough money to buy 500 acres." All we've got to do is just roll into the county commission, say, "This is to create affordable housing." Well, let me tell you. All of you, if you had people that you wanted to come in and show them around our great North Okaloosa County, probably the place you would not take them is one of these communities where they've come, pushed down all the trees, built cookie-cutter houses that look the same because you can drive two streets over and see the exact same thing over and over again. At some point, I would request that our county leaders begin to recognize and appreciate that things like Savannah did not just occur because the developers got to drive the equation. And now they have a cherished piece of property in an area that they can be proud of. I would like for us to continue to be proud of North Okaloosa County. I'm opposed to this development, uh, on Possum Ridge Road. Thank you.
James Reeves? James Reeves?
I'm, uh, Mr. Chairman, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
Uh, good morning to all the commissioners and attorney. Um, I'm James Reeves. I reside at 6528 Possum Ridge Road. And I am a resident that resides up against the subject property, and I'm here to oppose it. I echo what everybody has said so far, especially on the comprehensive plan. That's one of the reasons you, you look at a place and you, you, you know what you want. So you go out there. I've, I've, I've seen the sprawl because I started off in Destin back in 92. And when you went to the Applebee's and the Walmart out there, it was like a drive, you know, and it wasn't because of the traffic that they had. It was just a long drive. Moved from there, crossed the bridge to Niceville, same thing. Come on up here to Crestview, and I've been up here, you know, 12 years. Now it looks like it's happening again. I love Okaloosa County. But if it, if it gets to that point where it's like Dustin and the way Niceville is starting, I guess I'll have to leave Okaloosa County, and I don't want to do that. You know, my family's here. My, my sons are here. I got a business here. My son is a county employee here. It's, it's just tough. I mean, I do not like, I kind of argue with my wife on who's going to go past Highway 90, you know, you're going to go today or am I? Th- that's our demarcation because of the traffic is awful. And speaking of traffic, the, um, Possum Ridge Road is not going to be able to handle any traffic. I, I'm not here to say this guy can't develop what he's got already in the zoning that it currently is. It's, you cannot have 2,000 homes in that area, which means you could have at least 4,000 cars, if not more, come down that little section at that curve to come out and get onto Possum Ridge Road. I'm not trying to knock the county, but they can't even keep up Possum Ridge Road the way it is now. There's a place, um, you can't even walk on the right-of-way because it's so overgrown. And, and there's no sidewalks, you know? And, and half of it doesn't have any hydrants. And also for public safety, you got to worry about the, the police officers, you know, the sheriff's department that come up there. And when they're up there doing this number, trying to get a signal, you know, on the radio, hand radios, you need to get your infrastructure set up before you start bringing in tons of people. I mean, you guys have probably seen on, on the news that Highway 85 just recently got voted number two as the most dangerous road during Thanksgiving travel. You know? It just, it's not going to make it. I mean, you, you can have all the traffic studies you want, which, what you all need to do, and I'd be willing to, you know, on my taxes to, for future growth and stuff like that, let the commissioners and all take a, a bus ride or their individual thing and pay them back for their expenses, their gas, and drive that road and see what you think. There is no way you're going to handle, you know, even if you say 1,000 more vehicles on that road. That road's awful. So, um, 6.2. Oh. I want to go now because my blood sugar's getting high.
Yes, sir.
So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
All right.
Al Whitmore?
Oh, Commissioner, my name's Al Whitmore. I live at the very end of Possum Ridge Road. I have lived there for 16 years. And one thing I want to say about this neighborhood, you rarely ever see a turnover. This is a well-established neighborhood. And I just don't see how the one person can have greened the ability to change the rights of everyone else in that neighborhood. One, uh, change in fact, by the time you get to me, there's been eight right-hand turns. The other thing is, I live on 20 acres. I have lots of wildlife. And at the end of the last commission hearing, I talked to one of the commissioners. I've asked about the environmental review. And, and who changed, checked it, and he wasn't even sure if it actually got done. So I want to know, can I maybe speak to the environmental review? How much time? How big the report is? How, any animals that live there? Because I can tell you, on my own property, I got pictures, great blue heron. I've got beavers. I've got stock, uh, fish. I, um, I got a, a big herd of deer that come, um, by, and I live just southeast of where the development is, and the deer go up during the day and they come back at night. So, um, when you talk about an environment, oh, and one of the best things about maybe, because I used to run that property, uh, ages ago when it was fully wooded, and I think it's a sin to what they've done to it now. But one of the things is, at least the wild turkeys, you know, I had a big flock of wild turkeys, nine of them just landed on my property the other day. So, um, this would be a sin. So you may have cleared it and think, oh, you set aside some wetland, but you've taken away a lot of their territory and forcing them into a narrower or some alternate place. I just don't see how the total amount of traffic that's going, is, is also, it's going to be, uh, incredible because at the very end of Possum Ridge Road is the sharp turn going one way to, uh, uh, 85 North and another turn, and that's congested because it's hard to make that turn. It's just, I just see the extra, oh, one other thing is you talk about the water, uh, and storm runoff. Well, the county has, down that last section of road, the storm runoff runs underneath my property into one section of my driveway. I have, uh, I used to only have seven culverts underneath my driveway. I now have 11 to handle the extra water flow from Timberland Ridge as well and from the storm thing. Timberland Ridge, the bar retention area they, they built failed twice. And how do I know that? Because my property got butts right up to it, and one of the streams of water, it was clear through four of the pipes. It was real dirty during the other, this was while they were doing the construction, and it failed again. Sure enough, I go, uh, around to backside to see how they built it. They built up this retention area, and it blew a hole out underneath, and it failed again. So these are, say, when you talk about, you know, the water situation, it makes a big difference. I have, uh, stream sources from the natural watershed. I have one from an underground stream. Um, I got basically four different sources of water. It's a year-round thing. And by the time it, uh, ends, um, leaving my property, it's a nice raging river.
Mr. Whitmore, your time has completed.
Well, thank you. All I just want to say, one last thing, in the words of Nancy Reagan, "Just say no."
Michael Coop?
My name's Michael Coop, and I am a former resident of Possum Ridge Road, currently living on Sunny Lane, which is near there, and that's going to also majorly be impacted by traffic. So I'm, that's another reason I'm concerned because Garden City Road, Airport Road, and all the roads around are going to be horribly affected by the traffic of this. I'm also a former real estate developer in Ohio, and I knew better as a developer than to try to go in and buy attractive land and try to get it rezoned because I knew the best way to get it rezoned, if I had the money to do it, would be to pay off the county commissioners, and that's in Ohio, okay? So I am vehemently opposed to this, okay? And if you all want to go in there and blatantly ignore the ecosystem that's going to be affected, blatantly ignore the infrastructure, blatantly ignore the fact that we need a new schools because of this, then you guys are all in on the take, is the way I'm looking at it, okay? Who amongst you has driven by there to see in person what that situation is? Okay, there's two of you. Thank you. Thank you, two of you. So you ought to be able to talk to the rest of them to get them to vote vehemently no. Also, the other thing is we all can easily enough find out where you live. So if you want a war between your citizens, okay, and you, you're asking for it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Go ahead. Pat Watkins?
Before I begin, I got confused on the first comment section. I wanted to comment on the North Okaloosa Study, and I wanted to comment on Possum Ridge. So I'm not real sure what you want me to talk about now, so I will. Possum Ridge. Can I have my next comment later about the North Okaloosa Study?
For record purposes, you fill out another card with Mr. Tomachek.
Okay. I've already talked about Possum Ridge once, so here we go again. Florida Statute 6163 dot, uh, 3177 has some clauses in it that define what discourages or does not discourage urban sprawl, and I'm going to talk about two or three of them. One of the things that does- One of the things that does not discourage urban sprawl or does encourage it is it promotes, allows, or designates urban development in radial, strip, isolated, or ribbon patterns generally emanating from existing urban developments. This parcel, these parcels in this request are almost completely surrounded by RR slash RR and AG slash AG future land use and zoning, except for two small sections that constitute less than nine percent of the exterior border of this entire parcel. So that's one of them. The second one is it fails to adequately protect and conserve natural resources such as wetlands. Although mention is made of clustering to protect wetlands in the part in the petition and the application, no mention is made of how the almost fifty acres of prime farmland will be protected. In fact, no mention is made that there is even prime farmland on the property. It is completely ignored. The next thing I want to mention is that the clause in the statute says it fails to adequately protect adjacent agricultural areas and activities, including, and I'm not sure I'm pronouncing this correctly, silviculture, active agricultural and silvicultural activities, passive agricultural activities, and dormant, unique, and prime farmland soils. This application does not mention how the remaining adjacent agricultural soils and uses will be protected, completely ignores it. The last thing I want to mention is it fails to provide a clear separation between rural and urban uses. This application, there is no separation between these two land uses on the east side of the proposed, I think I got my directions right, east side of the proposed request. On the west side, there are two short ribbons or strips of higher-density zoning districts that are contiguous to the panels that propose this request. Ribbons and strips are specifically mentioned as a means of determining urban sprawl, which is undesirable and mentioned as such in the comprehensive plan, as well as the Florida statutes. There's more, but I won't go into it. I'm asking you once again to please deny or disapprove or whatever terminology you want to make it not happen. Thank you.
Heather Smallwood.
Hello. My name is Heather Smallwood. I live at six three three six Possum Ridge Road. I've already gone in front of the planning commission twice. One of them was unofficially, and then the last one was officially. So I'm just going to list the reasons I gave them and then talk a little bit more. Several reasons for denial include everything that everybody said, but let's just go over it again. Burt Harris Act, urban sprawl, prime farmland, our road, which we know when the development order comes, that's never going to go through because our road just isn't going to be able to handle it. A new high school is going to be needed. Right now, our high school is at capacity. So I'm not sure where my kids are supposed to go to school. Additional work needed to surrounding roads, storm drainage, relocation of all these animals living on the five hundred acres, noise pollution, our lack of fire departments, our lack of working fire departments. And there's a great deal of wetlands, which I know seaside engineering knows about. I believe it's about one hundred and seventy-one to one hundred and seventy-three acres of wetlands. Usually you can't build on wetlands, and if you want to, you have to get a permit from the Department of Environmental Protection. I've worked for builders who have built on wetlands because you can pay a mitigation fee to build on wetlands. Some of the worst home, I used to be a warranty coordinator. So some of the worst homes are built on wetlands. Obviously, with wetlands, you're going to have, again, storm drainage problems. Anyways, I'm just up here because we've already spoken. The planning commission said, yay, that they're going to advise you to go forward through it with it. So if you go online and you go to the Okaloosa County revised fiscal year organizational chart, twenty twenty-four, and you look at the structure of the government, who's at the very top? The citizens. The citizens of Okaloosa County are at the very top. There's only one thing higher than the citizens and God we trust. So I'm not going to sit here and talk for another minute. I'm just going to say right now that I declare and decree, and I'm trusting my Father in heaven to place in your hearts to say no. Say no to this only one of us, please. Heavenly Father and Jesus' name, amen.
Brian Hornberg.
Good morning. My name's Brian Hornberg. I live on Buckward Road in Baker. And you all have heard a lot of things from the citizens and a lot of different perspectives on this, and I agree with that. There's valid reasons to disapprove. And we'll, we've heard in the planning commission meeting that we appreciate your passion, but we don't have any justification to disapprove. After they'd been given about a dozen reasons to disapprove according to the law, according to the comprehensive plan, in detail, item by item, about is it consistent with the development pattern? Is it urban sprawl? Is it appropriate? Is it necessary? We we just did the study, and we know that there is sufficient property within the urban development boundary to do more than double the anticipated growth over the next twenty-five years. And there, and in the Inspire Study, they're recommending a pretty broad urban development boundary that's even bigger than it is now, and it's very generous, and this isn't even within that. And it's it goes beyond it, and it's not necessary. And as they said before, the the owner that bought this property knew what he was buying, and we're not trying to limit that. He can do it in the zoning that he's got. But there's not justification to change the zoning and change the lifestyle and welfare of all these people that live right there. We know what the comprehensive plan says. It's in plain English. We can understand it. You can understand it. We know it doesn't abide by it. That's clear. And in the planning commission, they pretend they don't have justification to deny it, but they do on multiple points, but they won't. They won't enforce it. And that's what people are upset about. We want the law enforced. It doesn't agree with some of the state statutes. It doesn't agree with some of the comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, intent. And we want that enforced. We know that approving goes against everything the citizens in the north end of this county have been saying over the last ten months to the county. And they've expressed it over and over in hearings and petitions, in the Inspire Study, in nine different town hall meetings. It goes on and on. We know there's not valid justification to go against the will of the people on this. We know there is valid justification to go with the will of the people and to deny this. We know it's your statutory duty as county commissioners to enforce the comprehensive plan. So Burt Harris doesn't trump that. You're supposed to enforce the comprehensive plan by law. These citizens have rights, just like builders do. And in fact, the citizens should have more rights because they're the ones that actually live there, and the citizens of the county are who you are supposed to serve. You're not supposed to serve special interests. You're supposed to serve the citizens of the county. That's who you work for. If you don't, there's something wrong, but that's who you're supposed to serve. You should be protecting the quality of life, health, safety, and welfare of the residents. Over the past year, though, this county has demonstrated a clear and consistent over-concern with the wishes of developers and a disturbing lack of concern for the protection of the local residents who they're supposed to serve.
Mr. Hornberg, your time is complete.
All right. And I will just wrap it up by saying the Inspire Study found that there was a sense of alarm among the people when it just started, and it's increasing. That alarm didn't come from nothing. It's there for a reason.
Thank you, sir.
And we want a government by the people, for the people.
Our next speaker will be Lain Watkins.
Good morning. My name is Lain Watkins. I live at six oh eight seven Bud Molten Road in Crestview. I'm asking you to deny this rezoning application. Please respect that. We keep talking about the study because the study's relevant. Over four thousand people participated in that. That's basically ten percent of the study area. We overwhelmingly want to preserve and preserve and protect our rural and agricultural character. We also have a petition online. Over five hundred people have signed the Possum Ridge petition to oppose this rezoning. As pointed out, the current zoning is fine for development as is. We don't need this rezoning. This project is surrounded by rural and ag land. I'm just asking you to notice it's ag all the way to Laurel Hill. It's all, it's, there's no LDR all the way down a mile to the urban development boundary. And our expert AICP credential witness, Inspire Place Making Collective, points out in their final report, they should post a picture of that property just north of the urban development boundary as an example of urban sprawl that's inappropriate. So that's what's going on in this area. So it is not an LDR area. It's an ag and rural residential area. By the way, we have a surplus of approved housing. Mr. Camperd states there is no policy document that concisely states how many homes by type are needed in Okaloosa County. Inspire states that there are more lots available now than needed for the twenty thirty-five population projection. And other citizens and I have shown you on our informal list showing there's over forty-five hundred homes already approved. Now, that's almost as many new homes as the number of people expected by twenty thirty-five. The project is, I feel, violates Chapter one sixty-three, among other things, a hundred percent automobile dependent. Let's talk about the Burt Harris elephant in the room. The county staff analysis appears to liberally interpret Florida Statute one sixty-three in the applicant's favor as well as a comp plan, possibly based on inordinate fear of applicant lawsuit. It's already been mentioned once appeared this morning. Based on the expert testimony video that you have, that we provided you the link to, according to attorney Richard Grosso, the Harris Act creates no property right for increased zoning. I think the county is acting out of fear. The video points out that there has been only one successful ruling in favor of a claim on appeal. All others were overturned. You'll find that the study supports all of this information. So and just as a comment on the legislative agenda, Burt Harris does need to be reined in. But it totally supports what we're asking for in the study, and it totally supports. Let's go ahead and deny this application. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Jamie Smith.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. A minute ago, well, shoot, now it was probably an hour ago. I was proud to be a citizen in Okaloosa County, the way you guys work together. And because of the optics and what have you, you were like, no, we're going to vote no on the ship because citizens are going to see it as we're putting tourism above infrastructure, and it's not a good idea. Let's postpone it. You guys made me really proud, and I appreciate that. I saw it, and I appreciate it, and, you know, I wanted to recognize that. So thank you. But I'm here in opposition to this rezoning. I I'm Jamie Smith, six four one two Willany Boulevard, Yellow River Plantation. I'm here to stand for responsible growth. And when I was thinking about it last night, I turned to my Bible, and I I came across Olympians, three, chapter two, three through four. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit, rather in humility. Value others above yourselves, not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interests of others. And I think that's an important thing to remember. The flaw in the logic of we're going to build more houses, and then we'll have more money, and then we can build more infrastructure to support that housing is that we've already been doing that, and we're already behind. So continuing that growth for the sake of growth is an awful lot like cancer. So I think we ought to rethink that. The last thing I want to say real quick is the landowner obviously has a right to the land the way he bought it. But all these citizens here have rights too. And where one citizen's rights end is when they begin to impede on the rights of other citizens. So for this zoning to happen would impede on these people's rights and the rights of the people in the entire county, really, because it would be that much more of a burden to the infrastructure, which we are already behind. We're behind the power curve. We need to focus on responsible growth, catching up our infrastructure, and he has a right to develop the land as is. He also has a right to ask for the rezoning. Ask the community. Ask the commissioners, the county, what have you. Ask them to change the zoning. He asked, and the people have answered, and the answer is no. And that's all I have. Thank you. God bless.
Mr. Tomacek, the final card I have is Jeremiah Kaler. Do you have more? All right, Jeremiah.
Jeremiah Kaler, six three zero one Possum Ridge Road. Good morning. I sent an email to all the commissioners and to all the new commissioners detailing the Florida statutes that, as was said earlier, you are supposed to follow. I put in the email all the details. I tried to make it super clear that what this is asking for does not abide by Florida statute. The planning process or planning commission was a disappointment. I feel that they are overlooking their obligation to look at the policies and Florida statutes and present them as they are. And then the board can still, you know, make a decision based on that, but they did not do that. So now the citizens are here reading the Florida statutes, reading the local comprehensive plan that the county should already be well informed of. I I agree with everything that everybody said. It's it's known. It's not a, it's not a secret. The, we have a petition. Five hundred and fifty people have signed it. I submitted letters. We submitted photographs of the road, the conditions. We all know this exists. There are over two thousand homes for sale today. I've got a couple printout for you. And the housing prices are decreasing because there's too much. And they're low value. As the person stated earlier, I just went on vacation. I go to Georgia. I go to different places of Florida. They have roads. They have sidewalks. In Georgia, every house is on an acre. That's where people want to live. They don't want to live here. If I if I moved and I saw this neighborhood, I wouldn't move there. That's why I moved to where I chose, because it's eight acres surrounded by woods. That's why we live there. And the way this is going is we're not giving people incentives to live there. There's clearly land that is available elsewhere in the county that is undeveloped. That's the definition of urban sprawl. You're not using the land as you have it, and then you're just plopping land right there. That little strip right underneath it that was recently rezoned, that shouldn't have been rezoned, it's empty. How can you continue to rezone when there's empty land? You can't. Florida statutes, I sent them to you. It's illegal. The comprehensive plan also outlines conservation, which is really not talked about. It should have been in the planning packet. It's not. It's overlooked, which means the developer left it out on purpose. The planning committee ignored it. There is a hundred and seventy acres of wetlands sprinkled through this property. That's thirty-four percent. State law and the comprehensive plan says density changes shall be restricted. That means will not happen. And then there's been the mention of clustering. The clustering decisions are based off of The clustering decisions are based off of not changing it. You can't cluster if you change it and you can't change it because there's wetlands. So I appreciate your time. I hope you looked into the email. I hope you looked into the photographs and I believe it's very clear where the law and the comprehensive plan stands. And I will say, whatever decision is made today, we will not stop. I will continue to show up every day at every step of this development if that's what it takes.
Thank you, Mr. Kaler. Your time is completed. Cole Granger?
Morning, everybody. Cole Granger, Seaside Engineering Surveying, working on behalf of Mr. Riles on this one. Couple of things. We've worked extensively with the county staff, gone through the rules, made sure that we met the requirements, paid, worked with other professionals, doing studies, comprehensive plan analysis and everything to demonstrate that, that we fall within the letter of the law on this one and which is why we're here today going over this. Couple of things to note from the previous meetings. We've listened and we've, we've secured a secondary access that will give us direct connection to Highway 85 through the west. This will help with traffic. This will also help us with the utility improvements that we'll have to provide for this with all the water. You know, and part of some of this rezoning, they talked about the wetlands and everything. We're trying to be able to cluster appropriately in areas to avoid as much of the impacts of wetlands as humanly possible. During the development order process, which this is not, this is a rezoning process, we'll go through the extensive rigorous reviews and requirements at that time, which will include buffers, green belts, not only by the county, but by the state levels. That's reviewed by multiple agencies as far as the studies and everything, you know, we'll have to do extensive wetland and the studies of the property and impacts to animals and everything like that. Make sure there's no endangered species. If there is, you're taking appropriate actions and work with those agencies at that time. So like I said, you know, we're requesting that you approve this to move forward to the state review level. We've demonstrated and we've worked with the county staff that we, that we're meeting the requirements of this zoning in the future land use change.
Tim Bowden?
Excuse me. I'm Tim Bowden with Seaside Engineering. Just want to ask you guys to go ahead and approve this project today to move forward to the state for review and approval. Your county staff has reviewed the project. They have said that it meets all the requirements to move forward and that's what we're looking for. I do also want to remind you that you guys have other options other than denial. So please look at that yourselves when you're making that. I do, Mr. Chris Riles wants to come up and speak as well, but I do want to mention that, you know, he has secured that at that secondary access point because he's heard these concerns of the citizens. He's also heard the concerns of the citizens for a lot of other things. He's wanting to come up and talk about his, his idea for what this development will be. And so with that, say thank you.
Thank you. Mike Chesser? Mr. Chesser?
Good morning.
Morning.
I want to start what I'm going to do by denying completely that Elliot Cambert is my younger brother. He is not. We are not family, but could be. But, and I believe, although I've not checked, I think he's even older than I. I know he's about to retire and, and I know Lynn would love for me to be as well, but that's not going to happen for long. I, you've heard everything. Let me just say, I spent some of the last few days reading the multimodal transportation plan that's on your desk. I think it's on your desk and for consideration at some point. And I got to tell you, I really didn't understand exactly how it works. My understanding, Lynn and I have not had a chance to discuss that at length and I'd really like to, is that when there is a project such as the one you're looking at that's approved, there is an anticipation in your comprehensive plan that there be a participation in the funding of those roads and other things that are necessary for that property. That, that the county doesn't bear the cost of increasing those roads, nor does the developer. They jointly bear that cost and that those decisions need be made when a development order, or in this case, when a zoning change is made, somebody has got to stand up for those things. The multimedia, I'm sorry, the multi-faceted transportation plan kind of eludes me because I'm not sure how it deals with rural property as opposed to property inside of a community. I know we need sidewalks, whether we need them out there and whether if we do, we need them on Bud Molton Road and Possum Ridge Road and other roads. I don't really know where that goes. I say that because I want you to think about it when that multimodal transportation plan is considered. It is, I understand, to be considered shortly. And if that is true, it seems to me that we're getting the cart before the horse, that we really need that plan. We need some attention. The Inspire Plan is still sitting on the desk, I believe. Frankly, I found it to be amazing and I would like it to take some study. I'd like it to get some, some consideration by this board. I believe what it says, not even between the lines, it almost blatantly says, we've made some very big errors. We think we can correct them and I certainly hope that's true. One thing I wanted to tell you about concurrency, I, we're not there. The sewer system issue and this subdivision is a very big one. The comprehensive plan suggests that your urban development zone has some significance. We're now rolling way outside of that urban development zone. And while I see that it says that we can extend that sewer line at some point in the future, and I know that that's true, it's going to be a long time before that happens. And I know the state policy is very much contrary to what this proposal says. The state policy says we will reduce the number of septic tanks. We will increase the, the availability of community sewer. And that simply is not done here. I want to point out to you, and again, I've not had a chance to discuss it in some, where I would like to discuss it most, and that is in a quieter setting with a, with people who read these things and really understand and want to apply them. But, but your Chapter 163 regarding your comprehensive plan does not say that a change to the comprehensive plan will not encourage urban sprawl. What it says is your comprehensive plan and those actions taken pursuant to it will discourage urban sprawl.
Mr. Chesser?
Yes, sir.
I need you to wrap it up very swiftly.
Judges say that to me frequently.
They don't quite put the clock in front of you, though.
Thank you. I appreciate it. What, what your plan says is that it will discourage urban sprawl. This one not only does not encourage it, it doesn't discourage it at all, which is what the plan says.
Yes, sir.
I'd love to discuss Burt Harris. This ain't the time for it. And, and we all, Burt Harris is a very big disappointment to me for many reasons. And I'm, I'm also a local government lawyer, but I, it is, it is not a tool that helps you.
Sure. Randall Forsyth?
All right, bear with me. Most people say I have organized chaos and so it might be chaos, but it might get there. So just bear with me. So today, I actually recently retired from the Air Force. I came here to be a fly on the wall, but after listening to a bunch of my members, I'm actually in a new development, which I hate, by the way. And the reason why, I'm going to go through some notes that I took here. So Mr. Fortner, I believe was his name earlier, he talked about Savannah and, you know, we don't need more Dr. Horton cookie cutter homes. I'm in one of those and I absolutely hate it. It will not be a forever home. That's what you're going to have in these types of developments. You know, I think of the Truman Show. You guys probably saw that. Every time I walk out of my house, I feel like I'm in the Truman Show and nobody wants to live in that, in that type of environment, right? You know, I was forced to buy this cookie cutter home because the property just costs too much right now to build myself and retired from the Air Force. I didn't have time to go from Connecticut, fly down here, look for some places to build on. So I got that home, but that's going to be a five-year home. I'm looking for a place to build, you know, I'd like to build out and I might have to keep going even farther north. The more that y'all put these developments up, the more I'm going to go farther north and eventually I might not even be in Okaloosa County. I grew up here. I retired or I graduated 2004 and I joined the Air Force and I recently retired and I wanted to come back here because I knew the community. Well, when I came back here, it's not the community that I left. Let's see. Most of the developments, the one that I'm in, they, they come with HOAs, right? And many of them I feel like are money grabs and I hope that that's not going to happen here. The one I'm in now, we have HOA, but we have no amenities. My daughter has to walk to her bus stop, which is about a quarter to a half mile in the dark. All right, she's 16 years old. I don't know what's going to happen to her. She walks with like these little spikes on her hands because she's afraid of what's going to happen. So these people come in, they develop these things, they build them real quick. You already got stress fractures in the house and all these things because they're building on properties that should not have been built on, is what I think. Moving on, don't want to run out of time here. American dream, the American dream was to build a property, have a home that you could live in forever. Fortunately, we're not doing that here in Crestview. I like the whole Savannah aspect, you know, come here, have pride in your community. I think we no longer have pride because we're building these homes that nobody wants to live in forever. It's also building communities that actually don't, they're not a community. I don't even know half of my neighbors because they just come there because of the property and realistically, none of us even like our homes. We're just there, we live in it, we leave. Homes will not be forever, but community can be built. So right now, I think, like I said, back to that point of these homes being so cheap and affordable, which they're not. I'm paying way too much money for this house that I'm living in. We're not building those communities because of these cheap, affordable homes that we're living in, but we're just there so we can get out. Okay? That's what we're doing right now. I grew up east of, east on 90 past Shoal River. I went back to there. I was hoping to maybe build a house out that way. I just saw there's a development out there. That's not a place I want to build. I don't want to be stuck in a little small area. So what I looked at today, let me count it real quick. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 have opposed. The only ones who are for this are the ones who are going to be involved in, and they're going to put money in their pockets through this. I heard that, hey, we are trying to, Mr. Cole says, we are trying to, they haven't done. And then another one was, the staff has approved this, but where are they? They should be here and they should be standing on what they said. And I think that speaks volumes to what is going on with that. That's my time.
Chris Riles?
My name is Chris Riles. Landowner up there at Possum Ridge Road. I did not plan to speak today, so this may be a little haphazard and I'm going to do my best to, to explain my thoughts to help clear some things up. I wrote a quick email yesterday, which is all public, to one of the Commissioners. I'll skip some of the, the beginning part of it and just cut to the chase. And then I want to be able to explain after that. I wanted to reach out before tomorrow's meeting to give an idea where I'm at on intentions for Possum Ridge. The truth is, I am not set in any one specific direction. First off, I understand the neighbors' concerns regarding traffic on Possum Ridge Road. Regardless of improvements to the road, which me and my crew would be happy to assist with, I agree that an additional 600 to 700 families would be a bit much to channel in and out without running into these concerns. I have felt this from the get-go. I believe the following will ease these concerns. I hope this explanation is easy to follow and will help, and I can help clarify over the phone if easier. First off was, I can't put my map on the big screen, but if you look at those parcels that I own, scroll down to the southeast parcel. It's a long rectangle left and right. Be great if we could put the cursor on it just so everybody knows where it is. That's it. Develop 80 or so acres of the area just inside the Possum Ridge entrance into quarter acre lots, which would require R1 zoning. This would be everything between the entrance and the first creek crossing to the north. That creek crossing would access the remaining acreage. This area is coated in green, which right now, we're just going to count on the cursor showing which area it is in the southeast corner. And just so everybody has a very clear idea, it is this subject right here and nothing else. From there, the two possible scenarios that I'm interested in are this. Develop the remaining acres into hobby farm lots that range between 3 and 15 acres. This would be the rest of the property. Currently, the LDC requirements do not make this feasible. The reason is, is you can't make, you can't financially make it work 3, 5, 10, 15 acre lots with infrastructure that's required for quarter acre lots. The stormwater and potable water infrastructure are too expensive for this to be practical. I spoke to Growth Management Crew very informally, and they did not give any opinions on this, about loosening up the LDC requirements for this application. No stormwater, open swells to contain runoff, no curbing and wells for the people. I believe if certain changes can be made to this LDC, then it would give developers and landowners more options to build rural farm tracks. There is not much of these type lots in North Okaloosa County and none that are part of a master plan community. I am confident this would be unique and would be a winner in the eyes of the community. These farm lots would channel out Possum Ridge Road and would put the total lot count of around 300 families for the entire 500 acres, which is well below what is being talked about. The second option, there is a developer that has property in the far southwest corner of this development. We have spoke and there is interest there on both sides to be able to use that as an alternate entrance. If we are able to put this together, I'd like the option to develop the remaining acreage, which is everything besides what we have talked about, into additional quarter to half acre lots. This would require R1 zoning. I'm happy to quit and we can talk about this outside, but if you're interested in knowing my full intentions, I'd like to be able to get to the end of it. That's fine too. Y'all let me know when I need to stop. This would give a second entrance that has been such a concern. Potable water could also come through the side developers' land alleviating, alleviating the strain from the Possum Ridge line. My closing paragraph is regardless of the scenario, the R1 zoning change is critical to be able to design this into a user-friendly master plan community that would have the best chance on satisfying the concerns of local residents. My crew and I are interested in doing things differently than typical big box new construction neighborhoods. We are interested in leaving trees on the lots, dressing up natural areas, creating miles of improved walking paths and a handful of other ideas to keep nature foremost. With the county's help, I believe this would be possible to create a beautiful neighborhood that all would be proud of. And before I go, I just want to make it very clear that I would be interested in entering into any kind of developer agreement with the county to hold me 100% accountable for the ideas that I am talking about because I know that everybody here is concerned that if they let this happen, it's like turning the dogs loose. And before you know it, there, there has never been with any of my career or Seaside Engineering, ever any conversation about 1,000 or 1,200 lots or whatever in theory is possible in this. And I am 100% comfortable going into this in writing from day one that I will not be allowed to do this. I have made a living and made good money working for all these big box developers and they go in there and they just flatten neighborhoods and I don't like it. And I am interested in And I am interested in doing something different here. Thank you.
Michelle Harpster.
Michelle Harpster, eighteen oh one Harpster Lane in Baker, Florida. Um, at the planning board, I was there and the attorney spoke. They are saying that um, Mr. Riles' intentions of the property is not what matters. What she said was that we have to consider the full possibility of developing that land. It doesn't matter what he says he's gonna do with it, it depends on what could be possible if we change that zoning. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. This time we'll close the public hearing.
One more comment.
Well, you've already spoken. No, we're gonna, the public hearing is closed.
One second. I'm not real sure what-
The public hearing is closed.
Okay, then this is an informal hearing.
For you to speak right now.
Okay.
It's not a prime example, but he was the applicant. The applicants typically do not have necessarily the time clock restriction.
I didn't mention that.
Ma'am, will you please take your seat?
I didn't say anything about his time. I went up there to get-
You had your opportunity for public comment.
I'll be sending you all an email.
Your comment time is over as well.
I don't either. Chairman.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
Please ask him to leave, I don't like these threats.
No, I don't either. Thank you, Sergeant. Right. I would like to share with it being in my district first, if that's okay, and then move to uh, to you folks, a, a major concern for the proposed future land use map amendment that I have is public safety. I've been to the neighborhood, I've met with the neighbors, I've been to the neighborhood well before this issue arose. But a few things I wanna point out, the development specific impacts will not be known until such time as a development order application is received. The subject parcels, only connection to the county's road network is a single access point on Possum Ridge Road, which has been pointed out tremendously by the public as a terrible thoroughfare right now. Uh, via parcel that's smaller than many of the existing residential lots in the area. If this single access were to become blocked, the entire population of any future development could become trapped until the problem is resolved. In addition, having only one way in and out means that one hundred percent of the traffic resulting from future development will have no choice but to pass through the existing neighborhoods, which even if Possum Ridge Road has the capacity to sustain the number of vehicles, will profoundly affect the areas expressed by the area residents. Finally, regardless of the number of vehicles it technically can accommodate, Possum Ridge Road currently functions primarily as local residential road, including substantial number of residences that have direct access to it. The proposed flume amendment does not fulfill the overarching intent of Goal Three and Policy six point three of the Comprehensive Plan's transportation element. The goal states, provide a transportation system in harmony with environmental, social, economic, and aesthetic features of the area. Objective six three says, ensure the transportation system chosen as the optimum design is user acceptable by taking into consideration local desires and preferences. In addition to the traffic-related concerns, it's important to note that the subject parcels are approximately one mile north of the urban development boundary. Our Policy ten one of the Comprehensive Plan's future land use element allows the low-density residential flume designation outside of the urban development boundary. However, Policy nine point two of the flu provides specific criteria that are applicable to land use amendments that include the agricultural and rural residential designations. Item E of Policy nine two says, a relationship of the proposed amendment site to the urban development area boundary. It should be noted that while Policy nine two E above provides that agricultural and rural residential flume applications must demonstrate the relationship between the amendment site and the urban development boundary, it's extremely vague, providing no threshold such as distance or acreage that could be used to develop a favorable or unfavorable position on a proposed amendment. Knowing Policy ten point one's allowance of low-density residential outside of the urban development boundary and Policy nine point two's ambiguity, it can be reasonably argued that approving the requested future land use map amendment, it is neither sound public policy nor in the public interest due to three things. The lack alternative access to a large future development. Concern for how well Possum Ridge Road will function and the potential impact to existing development. And number three, the distance from the urban development boundary is reason for concern. While the proposed amendment does not blatantly violate the comprehensive plan, taken together, the concerns identified above indicate that under the present conditions, the proposed flume amendment is premature and should not be approved at this time.
Chairman.
Yes, please.
So, thank you for your patience today, this was really citizenship in action. Great advocacy, really appreciate it. Most of you were very courteous. Perhaps the other gentleman was a little off, I'm not sure, but the threats weren't good and we, none of us up here. We are five hardworking legislators, I will say that, we really are. We're not against you, we're with you, we just have to go by the laws and, and slowly make decisions. With that said, um, the, the current, the future land use map that, and thank you, Mr. Camper, for your hard work on all this, um, is a legislative decision which gives the board considerable discretion. And I would like to make a motion due to the concerns expressed with traffic, with roadways, density, wildlife, environment, lifestyle, that um, for the, for the potential impacts of the proposed future land use map amendment, I move that the requested large-scale future land use map amendment be denied.
Further discussion? Yes.
I first wanna thank every, this is not my district, but my district is facing some very similar problems, very similar issues. Um, I just wanna thank everybody who came out today. This is exactly what we need to hear, we need to hear your concerns and we need them to be well voiced and well collaborated and well orchestrated. And I appreciate you being respectful when you've done so, I appreciate the respect poured out in your emails. We, we're reading those and we're digesting this information. Um, Mr. Riles, I appreciate what your stated intentions are. Um, as somebody who has worked in real estate development, also myself, um, I, I know where those intentions can, can land. And I'm not saying that's where your intentions would land, but the possibility of it landing that way, or if, for example, you were to sell the development moving down the road, um, opens up a, a huge opportunity for situations that we don't want to see in, in the rural culture. Um, I appreciate, um, the fact that I'm usually going to be on the constitutional rights side, right? And this is a very difficult argument for me, it's taken me some time to digest it because I'm almost never gonna tell somebody who has farmed land or worked land or purchased land, you know, that they had designs to, to improve or embellish, that they're not able to do that with their constitutional freedoms. But in this particular case, it, it's really more a matter of not so much don't develop your land, but rather sharpen your pencil and work within the confines and the rules that are stated for you. And that's all I had.
Mr. Palmer?
Mr. Chairman, um, and thank you everybody who shared today. Uh, Mr. Riles, I appreciate your, your intentions for the property, uh, for all the concerned citizens. I definitely appreciate, uh, you guys, um, you know, your passion, everything that you uh, have stated as far as, you know, not wanting to change your, your way of life and everything. Um, so today, uh, I, you know, I, I had a lot of really smart things to say, but you probably summarized it best. Uh, I, I believe this is immature, this is, the, the, the plan is immature. Um, at the, uh, at the current development capacity for that parcel is six hundred and fifty-six units, so this is not a slam dunk for anybody. Um, and the proposed that I, the last proposed that I heard was six hundred and ninety-one units, I believe, was what, was what the proposal was, so it's a thirty-five unit difference, uh, which is not, you know, is not, not, not as bad as what it sounds like whenever we're actually, we're, we're actually being asked to approve could be almost two thousand units, right? And so, you know, there, there are other options, there's, there's a lot of different options in, in the middle. You know, we could do a, a special zoning district, we can do, you know, all sorts of different things. But I think today, uh, I think that the, the plan, you know, as the chairman stated, is, is immature. And I think that, um, I'm going to vote to deny. Thank you.
Mr. Goodwin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and um, so, uh, you know, I think the motion and the second on the floor are appropriate um, for this stage and where things are. A couple things, you know, this is clearly a policy decision at, at the future land use map amendment level. And it, you know, from a policy perspective, um, when, when all things are considered, much like many of the comments that have already been made, I think it's very difficult to envision how, um, taking this entire parcel to, uh, low-density residential would be a good policy move at this point in time. There are very valid concerns that I've heard raised about not just what does this applicant wish to do with the property, but what happens if those, um, you know, if this property were to be vested with low-density residential entitlements, you know, it may not get developed for a year, two years, three years, whatever, and it may be a different developer at that time. And so, um, you have to take that into consideration, that is what we're required to consider when we're thinking about whether or not something makes sense from a policy perspective. Um, and, you know, and honestly, uh, I think in a, in a way that this, this project has just gotten ahead of itself too quick, too fast. Um, and uh, it, you know, I think there's more work to be done. Um, and I don't know if there's been community meetings out in the neighborhood. Um, but you know, i- if so, it sounds like, you know, maybe some of that has gotten through, but there's still some, you know, some more work to do before you get there. Um, I absolutely am a big proponent of protecting vested property rights and, um, and, and Mr. Watkins and Ms. Watkins, I know you, you heard me talk before about down zoning versus control of up zoning, this is up zoning. Not, it's a future land use map amendment, I don't wanna use the wrong words because they have different standards, but in it, but for plain speak, call it up zoning. Um, and, and, and so this is the kind of thing where I, I feel like the commission really has to be cautious. Ride the brake, be careful, um, and make sure that things, uh, fit properly in, in our overall community, um, fabric. And, and as it sits, you know, presented to us today, um, I know, I, I can't support it and I don't think it makes sense. There may be, uh, alternative plans with the property that could make sense. But I don't think it's a good idea for the board to sit here and try to, uh, you know, micromanage from the dais some alternative detailed plan. I know we have that op, option, instead of approving the entire thing, we could approve part of it or different pieces of it. But, um, that's not really the best way to make policy on something like this. I really think that's more incumbent on the landowner to get those things worked out with the community. Um, and, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the motion that we don't proceed with this today. I don't think that means that, that, you know, the property can't ever have a future use other than its existing use. But, but you know, I think that there, there's a lot more work to be done on that. Um, frankly, from the perspective of connecting the, that, that parcel um, through that one little enclave, almost little enclave piece that, that connects to Possum Ridge Road, um, that right there was probably enough to, um, solidify my mind that this wasn't ready to go. Um, that just, you know, common sense is, look at the map and that's gonna be a problem. I understand they're working on some alternative access, I think that's good, like I said, you're just not ready yet. Um, now, I, I do wanna kinda talk about the procedure and decorum a little bit. You know, and, and, you know, and I understand the chairman had to, had to ask somebody to leave and that's not because that person's point of view is not important, but it is very important that we, that we try to maintain civility as much as possible. And as you'll find out here, and, you know, you've, you've heard everybody speak, the vote is going to go in a way that I think the community would be satisfied with. And so really, there's no need to get to those level of things. Um, you know, I, there, there were, there were some very compelling things said today and I believe that m- most of what was said was very heartfelt and to the extent that anybody got a little agitated during the process, I understand that's because this really, uh, comes near and dear to, you know, your, your, your livelihood, your home, your quality of life. So I appreciate how that can happen, but I, I do, I do just, you know, wanna say, from my perspective, um, the most compelling testimony I ever hear comes from those reasoned, well-thought-out, calm, um, you know, discussions where I can actually hear. Kinda, I don't wanna get, you know, you know, a- anxious, I wanna be able to think about it and hear you clearly, and so when we do that, I think it's very productive. And, uh, you know, um, I wanna say, you know, Mr. Smith, I think he's still here, had, had, uh, spoke about something and he talked about, um, he talked about a standard, which is actually a standard that I use often when I think about land use issues. And it goes back to English common law nuisance. And he said, it's, it's the balancing between a property owner's rights and then what happens when, when exercise of those rights impact another property owner's use and enjoyment. And I think that's a very fair test in a very good way, that's been around for a long time, that helps us balance those equities. And I think today, um, you know, based on all the facts and circumstances, you see the commission doing that, looking at a private property owner's rights, the requests they're asking, the impact on the surrounding community, and coming up with what's the proper answer for today, and it's, it's, it's no, not as presented. So, anyway, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with an eye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Camper?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with the, uh, future land use map amendment having not passed, there's no need to move, move on to the rezoning. So with the board's permission, I'll move to the third, uh, public-
Now, prior to the third public hearing, we're going to take a five-minute break. Certainly.
How's it going, Mike?
All right. We'll come back together for the third public hearing. The next public hearing is to consider, the next public hearing is to consider an ordinance amending chapter four and 12 of the LDC related to mobility. Mr. Camper.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our third and final, uh, public hearing today concerns amending, uh, chapter four, chapter 12, uh, which is the schedule fees in chapter A of the definition of the Oklahoma Land Development Code. These amendments are intended to put into effect the changes to the comprehensive plan that the board made back on, uh, November the 24th in the adoption of ordinance 24 dash 01 ESR, also known as ordinance 2421, which made the same relative amendments to the conference of plan, which put in place the conditions to go from a, you know, a more traditional concurrency based system, looking at traffic segment by segment, counting the cars. Then, you know, working with a traffic consultant to determine what the impacts are, then basically negotiating a proportionate therapy. In what the new code does will create some mobility plan where you now know what you're getting into right at what we start developing your project based on a number of units, the square footage of use, and then a mobility fee can be applied. So it can be more, it's more predictable, can be factored in, and it cuts down a lot of time. So it's friendly both on staff as well as the applicants. Finally, this is something that the state of Florida is encouraging. They actually amended the statutes a few years ago to make transportation concurrency a, um, an, an option. Counties didn't even have to do it. Oklahoma City has considered to do it, but they've also been encouraging us, everybody move towards mobility. And one of the big differences, whereas under the old way of concurrency, when you're looking at segment by segment by segment and then negotiating what kind of proportionate share, you have no choice in how that money's going to be spent. Under the mobility plan, there'll be two, uh, mobility districts, north and south of, um, of the Eglin Reservation within which that dollars that are collected through that mobility fee can be utilized for projects on the mobility plan. The mobility can't, plan can of course include road widening, road extensions, but can also include sidewalks. It can include bike paths, multimodal type improvements. Those can all be used under the guise of being multimodal as opposed to simply let's try to pack more cars onto the roads. So, um, Mr. Bitterman, who's the, uh, county engineer, he's been probably knee deep in this as much as anybody. He's here to answer any, um, uh, detailed questions you might have about the plan. Um, the consultant is here as well, who worked on the mobility study and, uh, presented the mobility plan. But again, what this does is this is almost housekeeping in that it amends our land development code to be consistent with the, um, uh, changes the board has already made to the comprehensive plan just last month. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have no speaker cards for public comment. Is there anyone from the public desiring to speak on this issue? This time we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners. Anyone like to make a motion to approve or disapprove the proposed ordinance? A motion by Commissioner Palmer and a second by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion?
Uh, can I say something?
Yes.
Um, I believe Mr. Bitterman worked on this and I think you did a really good job. I just want to say that. I mean, I read through this. It's, this is a lot of detail and thank you for your hard work on that. I just really felt like I needed to say that after a previous comment that was made. I disagreed with that comment.
Any additional comments? All in favor signify with an eye and it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The last public hearing is to consider a request for water and sewer to self perform construction of the CIP lift station and force main replacement project. Mr. Hackett.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, I'm here requesting the board approval for OCWS to self perform construction of the Crestview Industrial Park Lift Station and Force Main Replacement Project. OCWS staff has estimated the project to be roughly $1.29 million. The original station and system were constructed in the late eighties. And so from an aging infrastructure standpoint, this needs to be replaced. But even more importantly, from a capacity standpoint, we need larger pumps, uh, larger wet well and a larger force main to be able to accommodate current and future growth expected in this area. The bulk of this project will include, uh, replacing 3,400 feet of a four inch force main with a new eight inch diameter line. About 1,000 feet of that will be a bore under Bob Sykes Airport and particularly under the runway. So as not to impact the operation, uh, of the airport in any way, that bore will be 20 plus, maybe 25 feet deep. So we, we don't anticipate any problems. We'll use flowable fill to. We'll use flowable fill to, uh, abandon the old force main in place. Uh, the notice for public hearing was posted in the Northwest Florida Daily News, November the 11th. As of yesterday afternoon, we have not received any inquiries or questions from the public. That's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Yes, sir. Anyone from the public desiring to speak? I have no speaker cards. This time we'll close the public hearing.
Chairman, this is your district. Are you in favor?
I am.
Okay, I'll make the motion for approval.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Cox. Any additional discussion? All in favor signify with I. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving to department business, Mr. Coffey.
Good morning, Commissioners. I know you've had a long morning already. Uh, I know that I've had the privilege of briefing some of you on this stuff or most of you on this stuff. And I know you've seen it for several years now, so I'm going to try and be as brief as possible. Uh, I'm going to talk to you about two different things. One is the ARPA plan itself and one is ARPA interest. And there one has a deadline and one does not, and I'll, I'll clarify that here in a second. So first is the plan amendment. We've been at it for over three years now. Uh, we received a 40 million, 933,406 dollars. And, uh, we have implemented a plan over approximately three and a half years. We still have two more years of implementation if we continue and contract for that stuff or encumber that money. And, uh, I'm here to talk to you about both, some of those things we've already accomplished. And at some point I want to give you a, a presentation of some of the things we've been able to do with it, but, um, first, uh, the first deadline we're dealing right now is December 31st, 2024. So this is your last meeting to act on this particular issue. And then, uh, upon your action here, the next deadline is December 31st, 2026 to complete all these projects. Okay. So I'll point you to two different columns. I'll point you to the center column, current amounts, and that's the current plan amounts. And then the far right column is the uh, new amounts proposed. Obviously it comes out to 40 million, 933,000, 406. The goal along has been to make, uh, long-term investments with this primarily capital and to not send money back to the federal government because, uh, fortunately or unfortunately, you'll still pay for it and you won't receive that benefit. So if we can do local things with it, we want to do local things with it. Uh, first off, the one-time declaration, there's no changes in that. That was, uh, that was a series of projects and that's in your backup. And, uh, uh, there's no change in that. That's basically been following through. About 50% of these projects are complete. Some are still in the works. For example, new Public Works Facility, Jason's still working on that. We still are working on the 1 million for facilities and parks, but the sheriff's capital projects has been complete. The new solid waste transfer station is coming together. We did buy land at Show River Ranch. We also installing infrastructure at Show River Ranch. So those things are well underway under construction. Uh, broadband, uh, broadband, we've budgeted up to 14.5 million at one time. A lot has changed in that, and I've been able to brief some of you on that. I will plan to work my way through briefing all of you than that. Um, the state has gotten into broadband, which caused us to pull out a broadband some. Uh, they've given over 20 something million, uh, dollars worth of projects in the north end. And we're waiting for those to get implemented. They just signed those contracts probably in the last two months. So you're going to see a lot of that occurring in January, February, March of next year, starting, starting those build outs. On broadband, we still have a budget overall of 5.1 million. Some of that is ARPA money. Some of that is not an ARPA money. ARPA money has a lot of rules to it. So we, we have a few of those things and you had an item on your, uh, agenda already for, uh, broadband design. And we've lowered that to point three, 300,000. And then we have a, a staffing through December of 2026. So we're out there right now. You'll see them on the side of the road. Uh, they're going down. Uh, I think they've been already through Poverty Creek. They're hitting airport, but they hit 90 up Dorcas, and then eventually they're going out to Baker with some, uh, as well. And that's middle mile fiber and they're hitting all our towers to all our 800 megahertz emergency, uh, 911, emergency 800 megahertz towers, excuse me. So that's, that's really kind of a correction, right sizing. Uh, Show River wastewater treatment plant. We shifted proposed shifting money from 8.5 is what we have allocated now up to 13 million. Uh, previously we already talked about another 4 million for broadband. I added another half a million to that to round it off at 13 million. So that, that is going into the plant that's preparing for growth, that's providing infrastructure, not, you know, no sewer. You, I mean, excuse me, no, um, uh, subject take systems. Now you have a sewer plant out there. And this just reduces the amount we have to borrow and debt we have to pay off later. Clay pipe sewer pipe lining. Uh, we have miles and miles of, of clay pipe. This, uh, creates a situation where we have leakage into the soil. It also creates a situation where we have a lot of stormwater infiltration that winds up at our sewer plant. More stuff we got to treat. Uh, the board agreed to invest $6 million. Uh, we're proposing to do that for another two years and you have an agenda item following me for 2.4 million, I think it is. Uh, so, uh, that would allow us to probably get another five to 10 miles of sewer pipeline out of a total of 36 miles. So we're making incremental progress. In the last three years, we've made more progress than we ever made and Mike probably has those exact numbers of how much, how many miles we have and how much this will buy us. So again, we're proposing to shift some of that out of broadband and we're plugging playing in projects that are already ARPA approved, ARPA funded, and we can issue the task orders. So we don't lose that money, but we still accomplish something positive. Nonprofit funding earlier, uh, on the consent agenda, you had a bunch of continuous continuation agreements and I'll kind of go hit those real quick. So there were, uh, allocation of a total of 1.5 million for nonprofit funding. So these are the agreement, the agreements we still have in place. We propose to move three of those out of ARPA uh, into, uh, ARPA interest. And I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. And then one of those, we never got a response back under note two, and we proposed to eliminate that project altogether. The rest of these, if they have an asterisk by it, as you see up there, you, earlier today, you approved a continuation agreement that gives them to G, to, uh, December 31st of 2026 to spend their funds. And some of them are just now starting, some are midstream, uh, and then some of that list is they've actually completed their projects. So I'm going to, I'm going to go back up to here. Uh, then there's a bunch of minor ones I won't talk about. They're either complete or we're opposing, uh, we, we've kind of taken them off the list. Administrative legal, we just use that as kind of a balancing tool between the amount. So if we have money left over, we have eligible expenses that we can charge to ARPA, uh, for administration and legal. And we've had legal council bills that are, are related to ARPA. We paid for those. And we have staff, grant staff that we can charge off to that. Okay, let me keep going. The next one and last is salaries. We had 8.11, uh, allocated to salaries. And what this was, this was salaries that were created after March of 21. And what it allowed for you to do is to spend the ARPA money on those salaries and essentially allowed us to recoup some of those salaries we already budgeted for and spend that in other ways, essentially non-ARPA dollars then. So we went down from, uh, 8.11 million to 6.25. And this was primarily a change in discussions with the outside auditor, grant staff and legal. Um, there's ways you can do it. Uh, but we, we tried to keep it as clean as possible because when these things get audited in the future, we want to make sure we aren't paying money back. We want to keep it clean, keep the record clean and, uh, address it. So for example, we, we could have spent more money on airport, airports getting tons of ARPA money and they're getting more ARPA money. They're about to get, I think 12 million more dollars. So there's going to be more capital projects coming down there. Um, transit, we could have used transit, but transit is already federally funded and it already gets our, but you can't double dip, can't use federal dollars twice. So the general fund 3.4, a lot of that went back into broadband as you saw there. Tourism, a million dollars of tourism is going to go back into these projects that we've got, these capital projects at the fairgrounds and, and Baker. Uh, unincorporated parks, we have, uh, boat ramps and, uh, capital projects, uh, you know, the Bob, Bob Sykes, I mean, uh, our park over there and, uh, uh, the park we've been working on together. Bud Day, excuse me, Bud Day Park, what's it called? So we're going to have cost overruns that we, we budgeted money. It allows us to take that money, get it back into our accounts and re-spend it, uh, back on some of those, uh, projects. Public works, uh, there's been over a million dollars of public works we can put back in salaries and those go back into turn lanes, diesel lanes, equipment they need. And just, uh, keeps those funds healthy, those gas tax funds. And EMS is the last one. Uh, EMS, um, comes out of general funds somewhat, primarily ambulance revenues and stuff like that, but it's subsidized by the general fund. Any money we can put back in that stops, uh, general fund money being expended into EMS. So. So that's the resolution and that's the, uh, what's before you today, uh, on the first issue. Any questions on the ARPA stuff itself? I know I went fast.
Yes.
Can you give us that breakdown? Yes, this, the breakdown of nonprofit funding.
Oh, okay.
Just one more time.
Yes.
While she reviews that, will you, and let me know about corrections. You had money there allocated for training and then it shows zero. Was that spent or did you reassign it?
We, we, we reassigned it to keep it clean. We, we did. We were going to fund the initial class of, uh, Corrections Academy. And then it, that paperwork never got turned in correctly. We had some issues there. So we just decided it wasn't worth messing with. It was cleaner to put it somewhere else. And we already paid for it out of our, uh, it, it capacity in the corrections budget that year. So we decided, okay, let's not turn it in. Let's, let's move on to the next thing. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's, so it's the last time I, uh, I reviewed this with you, um, Habitat for Humanity was on here and now it's, it seems to have been eliminated. Can you, can you elaborate?
Yes. Thank you. So let me skip ahead a little bit to ARPA interest. So ARPA interest. Uh, there were three projects of that were of the nonprofit that we proposed to move out. Why? Cause they weren't far enough along. We either didn't have an agreement with them or we didn't feel they were moving in the right direction and sufficient enough. And there was danger of losing the ARPA dollars. So we proposed to move them into ARPA interest. And the reason we proposed to do that is that gives the board maximum flexibility. You can still hold them to the ARPA standards, but you lose the timeframes. You aren't in danger of losing that money if we didn't have it allocated in an agreement for. And there's three of those projects. And I'll skip ahead a little bit to here. And that's what I showed you the other day. So the top three right there is Habitat for Humanity, uh, Mental Health Association and One Hopeful Place. Uh, so, so these have all been approved by the board in, in, as a, as a project, but they have not been all two of them have contracts and the other one does not have a contract.
So they're all just awaiting, they're like in limbo right now.
Correct.
Waiting to produce the documents you need to see from them.
That's correct. And, and get the go ahead to move forward. And that the board could set a timeframe on this and say, okay, if I don't have something by June of next year, then I'm going to take the money back into the general fund and we're going to roll it into next year's budget and use it somewhere else. But you could give them a little bit more time and then, uh, the project itself, it allows you maximum flexibility. What I didn't want to have happen, for example, and I don't want to pick on One Hopeful Place, but we know that there's a dynamic between the Fort One Beach City Council and the chamber on this issue. And it may never come together. So if I put it in ARPA, the $180,000, we would have lost and had to write a check back to the federal government. This way at least you have that money there. And if nothing happens to the money, it goes into the general fund reserves.
Okay. Is there a timeline, um, that we need to meet in order to make sure that that money does not get restored back into it? Well, because it's ARPA interest funded, it's, it's already protected that way.
Correct.
Okay.
ARPA interest that, and, and, uh, my segue into ARPA interest, if I can go through that is this is the second part. The first part you had time constraints. You have all kinds of rules. ARPA interest, no time constraints, no rules. Uh, it's, it's almost like, um, no, no strings. Well, correction, there's rules. So no, no federal, no federal ARPA rules, but there's definitely rules. There's always rules, uh, on how we spend our money. So.
I think that satisfies my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, JD, for the assist. All right. So, uh, does that help? I meant to answer that. Okay. Any other questions on ARPA before I go into ARPA interest? Okay. Yeah, this, and this is the second iteration. We had initial plan. We had amendment one. This is amendment two. And this is kind of final cleanup before we go into the final two years of ARPA spending itself. Okay. Nonprofit funding. So the federal government allowed us to take that 40 million, almost 41 million dollars, stick it in the bank and earn interest on it. And with the interest we earn, we can spend it however we want to. We don't have to follow ARPA rules. We don't have to vest a certain way. We don't have to do uh, we have to follow all JD's rules and your rules. Let's clarify that. But we don't have to follow the federal ARPA rules. So to, and today we, we weren't earning very much interest in the beginning, uh, year, first year or so. But since then, the clerk's office has been kicking butt on the interest. So we've generated approximately $3 million already. And, uh, forecast and conservatively, we're going to generate about another million and a half by the end of this thing, probably even up to 5 million total. Uh, so I'm trying to be conservative and whenever I present these things. So we've come up with a list of, of proposed, uh, uses of that fundage. You don't have to act on it today. If you feel uncomfortable with an item, postpone it. You can act on it today, but, um, or not. Nonprofit funding, there's three items that I presented and it totals 300,000. And that again, gives you maximum, uh, capacity, potential additional nonprofit funding. I'm going to skip over that and come back to that one. Uh, the land, half of Gap property. Gap property is the Show River Drive property. We closed on that about a week ago. We did half general fund or out of ARPA interest money and half tourism dollars. And it ties us into the 2,000 acres. Radio test equipment. This is something we didn't budget for in the 800 megahertz project. And it's going to save us money in the long run because it's not going to cause us to take radios and send them out. It's a $50,000 ask. And I, I could buy the equipment quick and get it to sheriff's office as we're turning up the project. And by the way, that's another issue. We probably need to brief you guys on and show you, but the sheriff's office is already on the new system. Uh, Shalimar is on it. The college is on it and they're adding folks every week. So it's really, it's really, uh, going along well. Facilities, equipment and courthouse security. So, uh, late last year courthouse, uh, threw a bunch of security things they requested at us. Uh, we totaled them up. They were over $350,000 primarily due to the thing next door. We're working through that with them. We're whittling that list down. This would give us 150,000 towards some of those security projects. We've already done some of them. Uh, some of the screening and share shading and the facilities equipment as we take on these new projects. Uh, we're, we're trying and improve our professionalism. We're trying to upgrade our equipment so we can do a professional job. And we got a great group in facilities and parks now, and we're trying to keep them together and give them the best equipment to do the best thing. About 250,000 in equipment and trucks and, and, uh, different turf management equipment, et cetera, et cetera. We'd go towards that. Uh, Yellow River Bridge Construction, that was something that I, uh, I was supposed to bring this actually the last meeting, Commissioner Boils and Commissioner Ponder where I sat. I promised him I'd present, uh, half a million dollars, uh, for the bridge project. And we essentially we'd stick that in reserve because we know that construction is coming down and we need match money for grants, et cetera, et cetera. And we don't want it to come out of general fund. Of course it will come out of, uh, tourism, a lot of that will. But again, we don't know what that total price tag is. It could approach four or five million dollars. Uh, could be $3 million. Who knows? We, we don't know, right? Don't know what we don't know. Jail design. You may recall that one. That was a $7 million task order total. We don't think it's ever going to get that, that amount, but we do know that initial design, uh, survey, uh, geotech and then get through phase one, it's going to be about 3.7 million. So if I add that to the money, we, we specify some cares money. Care free money, meaning that we, again, we did the same similar kind of thing. And we've got a 1.5 in the bank. This will give us 3.75 for the jail design all the way for the next year and a half, two years to get us through essentially the main jail design, uh, process before we get to construction. Uh, property acquisition. This was a, uh, request that we, of course, hadn't budgeted. It's not a tourism ass, asset. It'd be a general fund asset. This was a property that was presented to us that's in Shalimar and it, uh, has the ability, it's across from our, uh, ball fields and stuff like that. And I can think I've shown you that. It's in the blue there and it has the potential to be essentially pickleball courts. Obviously, uh, Port Dixie, we have those ball fields and stuff there. We propose something that's not for kids, but we want to bring that potentially and work with that property owner to acquire that now while we have this opportunity that property owner has approached us is not in good health and we want to see if we can move on that. Last one, I, I just, uh, we, I'm not asking you to act on this today. This Baker Block Museum roof. Uh, but I will come back to you probably in January. I've got some more research to do after talking to several of you. Um, that roof has been in bad shape for a long time and we're going back 20 years. Per our lease with them, we leased it for a dollar to the Baker Block Museum. Um, they are supposed to maintain the building. Uh, I don't think they have the funds or where it will do it. They've solely shifted more and more under ours. We own the building. Uh, the building is, is leaking, uh, fairly bad and, uh, we need to do some work to it. Uh, we could put a Band-Aid on it for under a hundred thousand dollars, but that's what we have been doing. This would tear it all the way down to the substructure and put a brand new roof. And we'd get a 15-year warranty, et cetera, et cetera. So I've got to do some more research, but that cost, uh, we've estimated that cost already. We've got some quotes, but I want to come back to you that in January, but I just want to plant the seed today, uh, for that issue. So. That's the plan. Oh, the nonprofit. Any questions before I get to that potential additional nonprofit? Okay. Okay. So you have been approached a number of times about individual nonprofits asking for money. Some have asked we put the money in the general fund as annual allocation. We are dealing with one, as you know, that has has lost their federal funding. And this is an opportunity, whether you want to take it or not. You could you could choose to fund something like that. If you if you don't go down that route, my suggestion would be to put it towards park projects because we could use it in park projects in the general fund if you don't want to go down that route. So if you put it to general, I I wouldn't propose putting any more nonprofit funding in general. That gets split up a bunch of different ways. I would recommend you wait to the annual process for that if you're thinking about that. But I just throw that out there.
Help me understand what your immediate ask is right now.
Let's say my immediate ask is the three above, just to move those to our interest. This one, I just let me call it as don't make a decision today. I'll plant the seed. This was the the what do you call it? The exchange like safe, safe connections. Has asked you, they've lost their federal funding. They've asked for some assistance. Apparently, the annual funding is a hundred forty eight thousand. This is an opportunity to do that. If you want to do that, it's it subverts all our processes. But I throw that out there because we've been approached from both ways. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'd like you to think about that and we could take it up next time after you had a chance to think about it. My my tap dance around that was to say, I would not recommend you just put it in a pool and us do a whole thing. And we invite invite everyone to go apply again and we divvy up in ten thousand, five thousand, all that. I'd recommend if you aren't going to go that route, just please put it in the general fund and we can use it in facilities and parks, right, man?
Commissioner Goodwin?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know Craig, you're not looking for a, you know, us to take action on that other potential nonprofit funding item, as you so unambiguously labeled it. But look, I I'll just tell you right now. And, you know, we've had the chance to sit down and talk about this before, but I just think it's a good opportunity to kind of share with my fellow commissioners, my perspective on it. Instead of kicking it around and then coming back and chewing on it some more. I understand the concept was there because there's an operational funding need by one of the nonprofits we talked about, a nonprofit that, you know, I think they do good work and 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 serve a good, a good function in the community. However, as you pointed out, if we were to take that hundred and fifty and give that to somebody, just 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 pick, you know, a nonprofit to give it to to shore up their operational needs. One, I think that violates the pol, you know, like you said, violates our own policy under our nonprofit funding that we actually came up with a few years ago to make it a fair process. Two, it violates the whole ARPA award process that we'd created. And and so I'm not in favor of getting down the path of us violating our processes. I got yelled at enough for not following our own plans today. So I don't want to start that again. You know, and I understand that because government should, if we put in, we put in a procedure, follow it. And that's not to say that that nonprofit isn't doesn't do good work. But we have invested with them. They competed and they've gotten some, you know, I know you're talking about safe connections and they've gotten a pretty, they got the biggest slug of money from the ARPA competitive process. And I'm I'm happy to do that, but at some point, a nonprofit does have to does have to run on its own two legs. The county cannot just continually subsidize it, especially in operations, if it if it can't, you know, make it. Now, look. The other component of that is, you know, there's always this argument, does it shore up a core government function? When something is truly doing a function that is a core requirement in Okaloosa County, we enter into a contract for services. That's a totally different dynamic than what we're talking about with a nonprofit funding. So I I just, I I think that gets that that gets us into some dangerous area that we worked hard to get out of. I understand the need. I understand the request. I understand the want for it. But I think it would potentially be irresponsible if we went down that path. So for for all those reasons, I we can chew on it another until another meeting, but I don't see my viewpoint on that changing a lot. Anyway, and like I said, I've shared that with Craig, but I haven't been able to say.
If the board wants to give me feedback today, that would be fine as well.
Mr. Ketchel?
Okay, so now we're doing count counterpoint. So that particular function really does a great service for the court system. These parents cannot get along. They fight like I've never seen before. And I know this very well because I did therapy with parents trying to get them to get along and not use their kids as weapons. And it just didn't work. I couldn't stand it. After six months, I said, I can't deal with this. These parents fight like I've never seen. They use their kids against each other. So this is a safe place for them to exchange their children without their children seeing them violent or angry. And it's something that the court orders. So in this case, for this one time only, this one last year, I would say we support them because they didn't get their funding. No more. That's it. This is it. We make it clear. This is a one time thing, but it's so important to Okaloosa County and the court system for family lawyers and family judges. I'm my husband's not the family judge now. I'm just saying that straight up. He does criminal. But it's really important that they have a safe place to exchange these children with hostile parents. So that I'm in favor of funding one more time.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll I'll weigh in on with two hats of my hats that I wear. First, if I agree with with Commissioner Goodwin to 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 not get outside the good policies y'all put in place for this. I'll put my my clerk to the court hat on. I think one of the reasons that they lost the federal grant funding was because they were in a basket of all these competing nonprofits or programs that were trying to get funding for the different urgent needs. The difference with this one, I hardly agree with Commissioner Ketchel. It's the only nonprofit that I think we've got where the circuit judges order people to go use their services. And so I I tend to think it's more of that core or semi-core sort of governmental function. When when the court's ordering somebody to use a service because it's the only service provider in the area. It's different than the other sort of nonprofits. And I would agree, the ones that we have those kind of things with Bridgeway, other kind of services, we have contractual agreements with those services. Because they're semi-governmental type of services that the courts are ordering people to utilize. And so this may be the opportunity to realign how we treat that one particular program. And so that's my two cents from the from my clerk of court role. So I I agree with both of you is what I'm saying.
I have a question for you, JD. And and whoever else this may apply to. Could this be the opportunity to migrate or is it even recommended? Would you recommend us trying to migrate them to a contract for services so that we're not in this same conundrum every year, you know, for for funding them in a nonprofit capacity? I mean, is there the opportunity to migrate them to a funds for services rendered capacity with the with the the county?
It it's certainly the the time to pursue the idea. Not understanding their full funding mechanisms and how that it would impact those kind of things. I I can't tell you that sitting here. It's certainly a conversation we can have with the court and the administrative judge to understand sort of the the impact it has with their ordering people to use this service. And I'm certain that that we've got support from the sheriff and other folks who have to deal with these people. And quite frankly, Commissioner Ketchel is right. These and I've got a history of in the sheriff's office, understanding domestic related situations. The amount that you invest in this service will limit, will lower the amount of calls you have because parents are fighting and it gets violent. And so there's a there's that aspect to as well. So it's it's the it's the time to pursue the idea of changing the relationship to this group.
Right. I would be interested in having those conversations and maybe funding them in the in the interim to to migrate toward that model. I mean.
If that's the board's direction, you could do that in in proximity to next budget year and consider it at that time, whether you want to make that transition. If you provided gap funding this year. You don't want to remove the incentive, obviously, to apply for federal funds because if they just rely on you and they get, don't ever apply for federal funds, then you're funding the whole thing every year, that amount or more. So.
Commissioner Ketchel?
Well, I would agree with Commissioner Cox that that's one of those that, you know, we could make a contingent upon the fact that they have applied for federal grants. But that it is such a core function and it's such a safe place. And as as the clerk just said, I mean, their calls to the sheriff's office and police are so, it just costs more money. We don't try to address it from this point of view. I mean, I could see us not funding some of the other nonprofits. This is that, to me, this is one of the most important that we do fund for safety of the children.
Mr. Goodwin?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I didn't mean to jump in front of anybody else. So again, I just want to reiterate, my comments aren't that I don't think it provides a good service. And I think that looking to navigate towards a contract, if that is what's appropriate, would make sense. I do wonder if we would be required to put that out for competitive proposals, although I suspect they're probably similar to our animal control, they'd probably be the only respondent. But again, I know we have to be cautious about how we do that. I don't know about funding in the interim. If somebody, you know, and I mean, a hundred and fifty thousand is a pretty big slug compared to what we give to everybody else. And so that that also has some concerns for me. But if there's a way to do it, and maybe it's not to the full one hundred and fifty level. If there's a way to do it that I can be convinced that we are not violating our own policy, I will entertain it. I will not support violating our own policies. I think that's irresponsible government and I will not do it.
Mr. Coffey, do you know what their annual budget is?
I asked that question and working with Ms. Fitzgerald and coming up with that number, my understanding is the annual budget's a hundred forty thousand. Now, I haven't reviewed the budget. I couldn't tell you exactly what all that contained. But my understanding is the budget ran fiscal year or did it run calendar year?
The the hundred and forty eight was specifically the shortage for the federal grant. Their overall budget is much larger. They get about fifty thousand a year from from the county under the under the regular nonprofit allocation. So their their budget well exceeds two hundred thousand a year.
Somewhere between four hundred and fifty thousand and a million. I'm sorry, I'm out.
We could bring you a lot more detail synopsis of all the individual details if you if you're willing to entertain that coming back. Otherwise, if, you know, whatever feedback he goes to.
Looking at this in view of nonprofit giving, I I stand with Commissioner Goodwin. We have a process. We should stay within that process. Under the essential function of government, we have a sheriff. And I think that's probably our best direction is to to work with our sheriff to see the the resolutions that that he would suggest or maybe the options that he would be able to take to to fulfill some of this potentially. If there's an immediate need. But I I don't see it as a comfortable pathway to go and and change our own rules. Because this needs arisen now. There's no telling what the next need will be and who it will be from and to what level we'll explain away how essential they are. If Bridgeway loses one of their grants, I I don't see us jumping in to be able to save the day. We have to remember this is ARPA money. This is not money that that traditionally we've had and it's not money that we traditionally will have. And so if we build them up now with fictitious hope to say, well, we'll be your sustainability for the future. It's going to push us to some really hard decisions in years to come when this money is dried up.
Yeah, and we're getting, we have gotten another request for continual funding from another organization this this week, I think.
So is there action to be made today?
No, I I just just the action is to approve the resolution for the ARPA. That's the one action. And then approve essentially the ARPA interest spending less. So that's that's the the motion I've asked you for is approval of the resolution for the ARPA money. And then approval of the allocation of this ARPA interest with the exception of the Baker Block Museum and the potential additional nonprofit funding.
Okay. Clear as mud? Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Cox. Second. Mr. Palmer. That's all at once. Is there more discussion on that? Okay, all in favor signify with aye? It passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Autry? Yes, it is.
Good afternoon, Jason Autry, Public Works. We have one item for your consideration. This is a request to authorize a change order with CW Roberts Contracting for additional work out there at Jericho Road. Currently, Public Works is moving forward with the improvements on Jericho Road Phase One, which is from the south side of Highway ninety, moving south twenty five hundred feet in a little side road. Water and Sewer, as you know, is constructing the new wastewater treatment facility out there. And they actually have some grant money available to extend that road another seven hundred and fifty feet. As opposed to them issuing a separate contract, we're working with Water and Sewer and we're going to move forward with this seven hundred and fifty foot extension inside of the contract we currently have at Public Works. We've been working with them on how we can maximize our grant funding between the two departments. So we're excited for this. I do want to point out this adds four hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. It does not add days to the project. This is fortunate because it's the style of work that's out there. This additional seven hundred and fifty feet can be done without additional time in the project. I do anticipate additional change orders coming because we continue to work on work out there on Highway ninety. Once we get those permits in place, the contractor is aware of it. We're blowing and going and excited about this project. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
That sounds great. I think it's a great win. I wish you could come with the same news for the Southwest Bypass and eighty five and Live Oak.
Be great. We're getting there.
Yes, sir.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ketchel. Second, my Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Hackett?
All right, I've got two items. The first relates to the Shoal River Ranch SRF loan. That construction project for the water reclamation facility is underway with JMP Construction is going well. As you know, this project is being funded through multiple sources. One of those is Deputy Craig mentioned earlier was that part of this will have ARPA funds, but we we've got a very large loan for sixteen million dollars through the DEP. Staff is recommending that we that the board authorize the county administrator to execute the loan agreement after it is finalized and reviewed by county legal. We submitted an application for it on November eleventh. Unfortunately, there was not enough time to receive a final agreement for this meeting. However, DEP does fully anticipate having a finalized agreement sometime this month. Loan agreement that is forthcoming, it's a standard agreement based on set language that's used throughout the state. We have attached an example of it from another utility in your packet. We expect the loan agreement that's specific to Okaloosa County to be more or less the same. Nothing to be concerned about. DPS let us know that if we are able to execute this agreement by December thirty fourth, we can lock in a rate of one point five six for this twenty year loan. And that point, in fact, is the reason why we have this agenda request is to be able to provide this medium where the administrator could could sign for us and we lock in that rate. That would be great for us from not just a short term project funding accounting standpoint, but it's also a great benefit over the long term debt service, particularly if we can avoid a higher interest rate for sure. And so on that note, the debt service payments would not begin until after construction of the project is complete. So it'll be probably another two years by the end of twenty twenty six before we would even have those loan payments. So we ask for your consideration on this request. That's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there a motion? This is in my district. It's a great project. I believe we're all have been in favor of this moving forward. Motion by Commissioner Ponder Palmer. It took all meeting. It's because of how late it's gone. I'm sorry. A second by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye? And it passes unanimously. Your second item.
Okay, this also is another follow up to the ARPA decision earlier. I'm requesting board approval for a task order with Gulf Coast Underground LLC. I'm requesting board approval for a task order with Gulf Coast Underground LLC. Per the terms of the contract for a total cost not to exceed two point four one million. The contract will be fully funded by ARPA funds as, as was noted earlier. On November nineteenth, the board approved a contract with Gulf Coast Underground for rehabilitation of sewer mains and structures. That was awarded on the nineteenth and it was for a period of three years with an option for two one year renewals. The work will generally include, for the most part, cured in place pipelining, gravity sewer lines and, and manholes. And it would be in the areas of Garnier, of our Garnier system, Okaloosa Island and the Shalimar Service Area, which we and looking at, at the system as a whole, we, we deem those the highest priority. As you know, we have many, many miles of clay sewer pipe. And that outdated clay piping was, was based on four foot sections of pipe. And so there's lots and lots of joints which opens the system to groundwater intrusion, root intrusion. And those things compound backups and sewer spills. And so that's why this project is so important. We, in addition, it, it also provides with the host clay pipe. The cured in place liner, once it's cured, together they provide virtually the same structural integrity as new PVC pipe. So it's, it's probably the fastest, easiest, non-intrusive way there is to, to replace sewer. And so this has been a great, great project for us. The benefits are somewhat subjective, but they are substantial with the, this eight point five million. That, that's going to end up paying about twenty five miles total. It's cost about sixty five dollars a square foot, I mean, sorry, a lineal foot. And we've already seen during rain events where normally it was just a given, we would have backups, lift station problems. And, and forces were out all through the night trying to, to keep it in the system. We've, we've seen tremendous improvement in those regards, so it's got a, a great benefit, it's a really good project.
Thank you.
Motion for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, second by Commissioner Palmer. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, one item of new business, selection of board chair and vice chair for calendar year twenty twenty five. Commissioners.
So Commissioner, so I've given this a lot of thought and a consideration over the past several weeks. And especially given the, you know, sort of the breadth and the depth of everything that happens on this, on this commission. I think that obviously experience and continuity is, is extremely important. And so I would like to, if you're willing, I would like to make a motion to have you continue as, for another year as the chairman of the board. And I hope it's you too.
Sure.
We normally don't do that, we normally switch. So I think it would be better if we had a motion to, you know, you've done a great job, but I think it's good to switch it up.
We have a motion on the floor, I would be willing to do that, but we need to see how that goes and then, and then move towards a change pursuant.
I'll be happy to second it, it is very unusual, but I also feel very awkward to leave a motion like that hanging without a second. I think our chairman has done a good job. And in respect of that, I'm, I am willing to, to second that motion and I, I trust he would do a good job another year.
Sure. Okay, we have a, a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
So yeah, I'm, I'm happy to discuss, I understand that, that it may be unusual. It's also unusual, I think, to replace forty percent of the board in one, in, you know, one, you know, kind of short timeframe. And so, you know, just for me personally, I think that that, I think that that is what best, you know, serves me coming up speed. I don't, I can't speak for Commissioner Cox, but I think that it would absolutely help to have that sort of continuity and not have, you know, just everything, you know, kind of tossed into the air for, for re, you know, reshuffling at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Cox.
So I had already decided that my, my newness to, to the board meant that I was not going to, out of respect to the, you know, for the other commissioners, the senior commissioners and myself and Commissioner Palmer as new commissioners, that I was not going to make any nominations and I wasn't going to make any seconds on this. I'm really going to be leaning on the leadership of the three of you who have seniority here for shaping this decision because I, you know, I mean, because Drew and I are brand new to these spots. It really felt like the best thing to lean on the experience of those of you who had already been here, that's all I understand of that.
All in favor signify with aye? Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Or vice chair? It's not awkward at all, but if we have a motion for vice chair, that would be great.
Moved to open for self nomination.
I'll, I'll be glad to take it, I mean, I, I was, I had it last year and I gave it to Nathan. So if you would like me to consider being the vice this year, I'll be glad to, it doesn't, there's no lift to it.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm, I'm, I would have been happy to make that motion. I, I didn't want to take all the glory for myself, so, but no, I'm, I'm happy to support, thank you.
All in favor signify with aye? Any opposed, no, passes five to zero. We will conclude with additional public comment, Wade Merritt.
Today was a very long meeting, there's a lot of people here, there's a lot of passion, a lot of comments about the development and the growth and things in Okaloosa County. It's my understanding that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that Okaloosa County is the ones that implemented the process of the Inspire Study. The Inspire Study, if, based on how George and him came out with it, he said one thing and it was clarity. And under the proposed Inspire Study, there is clarity in what they put into that study. With the ten acre and the one acre and the, you know, one house and ten acres and five and one. So we could absolutely avoid a tremendous amount of grief and heartache from the citizenry on the north end of Okaloosa County. If we would consider adopting the recommendations of the Inspire Study. Because it eliminates the things that Mr. Ryle was trying to do. Because it's outside of that urban fifty one thousand acre that they've already proposed. And I commend the ones that made the comments today about following your guidelines and your rules and your policies. If you make them, follow them. People are starting to look deeper into how you act and how you follow things with your procedures. And it's good that the citizenry is involved, that is for sure. So the other side of this is, you think about this, you've got forty thousand roughly unincorporated people in the north end of the county that don't want to see the growth. I can promise you, they probably do not have a stake and care less about the USS United States boat for the Navy people, but a ship in the real world. But, but with that, you know, that's all tourist dollars. That Inspire Study, if I'm not wrong, was used with our tax dollars. And it seems to me that the ship is getting more attention with tourist dollars than the money that we've paid in in taxes, if that's what was used to fund the Inspire Study of almost a million dollars. That to me, with four thousand some odd people that commented about the Inspire Study, with the five hundred people that showed up at the first one, roughly around sixty to seventy to a hundred. I do have a feeling that when Okaloosa County proposed this study, they had no idea they were going to have the participation in which they had. Yeah, I bet if you were to go back and look, you're probably going to find out that that study was probably one of the most participated in and looked at studies from the citizenry side. So for me, just looking from the outside, as a citizen of Okaloosa County, living on the north end of the county, I'm not real big on tourism because it has to come through the north end, it disrupts our life. But we understand that's part of it. So all I would ask is that you take into consideration, the taxpayers of Okaloosa County have spoken over four thousand, ten percent of forty thousand. So just look at that and as you go into the Christmas holidays, think about why you're here. You're here to represent the people, we're not here to represent tourism. That is a leg and it's a profitable thing for the county and I understand that. But please listen to the people in the county. They are the voice, they are the people, they're the ones that put you here. We have a duty, not just for me, but for you, everybody, to work together for the citizenry and what's best for the county. And what's best for the county is the will of the people. So please look into that and consider putting as much attention into the Inspire Study and the northern people as we are looking to sink a ship, thank you.
I have no additional public comment request. So we'll finish with Commissioners Minute. Commissioner Goodwin. Mr. Ketchel.
I want to thank the sheriff's office for today in particular, it was kind of a rough meeting. And for all that they do to keep law and order, it's been a rough week, we've lost a lot of young people this week. We've had a, you know, a body floating that turned out to be a seventeen year old. We had a, a young twenty eight, two twenty eight year olds killed on a motorcycle that crashed and burned. It, we've had a suicide. These are all things that our EMS and sheriff's department have to take care of and thank them for their work. And especially here during the holiday season and all the parents whose hearts are broken this week.
Mr. Palmer.
So I want to second that, thank you to the sheriff's department and to all of the first responders. I mean, the, the work that you guys do is just absolutely amazing and I know that I couldn't do it. And so I definitely appreciate you guys. And I, you know, wanted to just tell everybody, this is our last meeting for Christmas, so Merry Christmas to everybody. And I hope everybody has a safe and just great holiday season.
Just wanted to thank you everybody for showing up today on, on whichever side of the equation you fall out. We, we really can't do this without being educated by you as to what your wants and needs and asks are. So I appreciate that. And the other thing I wanted to say is thank you so much to JD Peacock, who has been just such a tremendous service and benefit to our county for so, so long. He will be dearly missed and I appreciate your service.
All right, meeting's adjourned.